Good evening, it's now six o'clock and the regular session of the Lancaster Planning Commission is now in session. Mr. Burkey will lead the invocation this evening and Mr. Jacobs will offer the pledge. Please stand.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for your goodness and your grace. We thank you, Father, for this place where we live. We thank you, Father, that you have blessed this place in an incredible way. And, Father, we just pray, Lord, that you'd be with us as we make decisions. Help us to work as one team with citizens and planning commissioners and staff, all working together to better this Antelope Valley and especially the city of Lancaster. And, Lord, we pray for uncommon wisdom, wisdom from on high wisdom from you tonight. In these things, I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic, for Jesus' hands, I am God, indivisible, with every justice and justice for all.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Larry Burkey.
Yeah.
Jonathan Irving.
Here.
Dana Haycock.
Here.
Darren Jacobs.
Here.
Raj Malley.
Here.
Vice Chair Sandy Smith.
Yes.
Chairman James Vos.
Here.
We have a question.
Thank you. Next item is public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of ten minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers would be limited to two minutes each at this point. Any person who would like to address the Planning Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item you would like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the Planning Commission at such time the item is discussed by the Planning Commission. Speaker cards are available at the rear of the chamber and here at the front at my left. Individual speakers would be then limited to three minutes each for that session. So do we have any early speakers, Mr. Ludiki?
We have speakers listed for a number of items, but none of them have indicated a desire to speak prior to the item.
All right. The next item is our consent calendar approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 16, 2009. Have a motion, please.
I moved a minute from regular meeting of March 16, 2009.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments, questions? Please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing. This is conditional use permit number 0705. It is a request to construct a 4,372 square foot car wash with a detail shop in a CPD zone located at the northwest corner of West Avenue J and 17th Street West.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself as I have in past discussions for this based on a similar ownership in a property close by.
Very good. Thank you. Do you have a staff report, please, on this?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman Vos and Commissioners. Now we have before us conditional use permit number 0705 for the construction of a 4,372 square foot car wash with a detail shop in a CPD zone. The project is classified as a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act under section 15332, Class 2, as an infill development. Notice of a public hearing was mailed to our property owners within a 500-foot radius of the project posted in three places and noticed in newspaper as general circulation. Excuse me. The zoning ordinance requires a conditional use permit for a car wash due to the potential associations of onsite circulation and noise. On June 16, 2008, the Planning Commission continued conditional use permit number 0705 for 90 days to September 15, 2008, Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant to work with staff to address traffic, noise, and circulation concerns. The applicant was given additional time in order to complete these requirements. On March 16, 2009, staff recommended to continue conditional use permit 0705 to the April 20, 2009, Planning Commission meeting due to improper noticing. Since the June 16 meeting, the applicant has submitted all requested studies and revised the site plan only showing a car wash and adding a detail shop. As shown on the revised site plan, the new design includes a 1,813 square foot car wash tunnel and a 1,067 square foot detailing shop. In addition, a 1,492 square foot indoor/outdoor waiting area would be provided and 12 parking spaces for the use, and 14 parking spaces would be used for the drying area. Hours of operation would be between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., Sunday through Saturday. Adequate onsite circulation has been provided for the drying area, pedestrian access, and parking will be provided as part of the proposed redesign. The city of Lancaster zoning ordinance requires that 10 parking spaces be provided for the proposed use. The applicant would be providing 12 parking spaces, which exceeds the city's requirement by two. In addition, the city's ordinance requires sufficient depth to provide vehicle stacking for a minimum of seven cars appropriate to size, location, and intensity of the project served. According to the site plan, the applicant would provide 10 stacking spaces which exceed the standards by three. The stacking area would be located at the entry of the car wash and a vacuum area. The driver would allow vehicle ingress and egress for cars entering into the site of the car wash's area and exiting the site. The applicant is also proposing a detail area in which customers would drive to the car wash area and drop off their vehicle with their attendant at the car wash entrance. The attendant would receive the car after washing and bring it to the detailing area for the work to be performed. The customer has the option of waiting in the car wash area or returning to the site once the car is ready for pickup. The process for detailing the vehicle is between one to two hours depending on the work to be performed. The applicant submitted the required traffic study to the traffic department with the city in which we reviewed the potential traffic impacts at the intersection of Avenue J and 17th Street West. According to the report, the car wash would not increase the current level of service above E, and therefore no significant traffic impacts will result from the project. In a report prepared by the Antelope Valley Medical Hospital Master Plan Site Plan Review 9703, and later in a report prepared for the expansion of the Antelope Valley Hospital located south of the proposed project, and that was Site Plan Review 0724, it was determined that the impacts from both these projects, both the original hospital and the expansion, warranted the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of 17th Street West and Avenue J. If these conditions had been met within the intended timeframe, the intersection of 17th Street West and Avenue J would not be operating at a satisfactory level of service. As an initial measure until the intersection is signalized, the applicant for the car wash would be required to construct a channelizer with adequate signing and marking in 17th Street West to restrict left turns onto Avenue J. On February 2, 2009, staff received a noise study analysis which was requested by Planning Commission to review the noise levels based on the standards set by the city's general plan. Based on the report prepared by ATS Consulting and dated January 26, 2009, the noise level at property line based on the revised site plan is 70 dB-A. The car wash equipment would be located inside an enclosed structure which would be equipped with silencers to reduce the noise. The remainder of the equipment utilized at the car wash, including the vacuum press, would be fully enclosed within a concrete masonry block unit, and a six-foot-high block wall would be constructed along the northern and western property lines, which would further reduce the noise level below the allowable 70 dB-A. Based on the information provided in this report, staff's recommendation is to adopt resolution 0906, approving conditional use permit 0705. Thank you, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson. Any questions or comments from members before we hear the public? All right, then. As this is a continued public hearing, the hearing is continued and open now, and we would hear first from the applicant, I believe, Mr. Ludiki.
Yes, I'm going to assume that the person as listed as representing him is an Armin Hagobian?
Evening, Mr. Hagobian, is it?
Hagobian, yes.
Yes, welcome.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, staff members. First of all, I'd like to thank Rennie Davis and Sylvia Donovan and staff because they've helped us tremendously to develop this project and through, you know, different iterations we've come with this site plan, as you can see. We have redesigned the site plan. We have taken away a program originally and yet seen from previous site plans, which was at the Avenue J portion of the project, which used to be a coffee shop. So we have been concentrating on making this more of a car wash facility with, obviously, a detail shop. As you know, we have submitted the site study, site plan, and it has been reviewed, traffic study. The noise analysis has been done, and we have met all the requirements based on the planning requirements. If there's any questions beyond that, I think you have read the staff reports as they have favored in approving this project.
Thank you. For the record, we received late today, as we arrived, a memo from Ms. Davis giving us a revised elevation, showing all the elevations of all the structures on the site, which thank you for providing that to us. We've also received correspondence in opposition as well, so if those folks are here, I'm sure they'll have something to say. Did anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Irving.
How you doing? I would like you to illustrate in sequential order how cars are going to come in and where they would go.
Okay. I don't know if there's a laser pointer I can borrow or... As cars come from Avenue J making a right onto 17th Street West, they would enter this driveway, which is, as recommended by staff, is aligned with this driveway. So based on that, we were told that it would be easier for traffic circulation to be aligned. So once you come in, the stacking would begin into our property. So everybody who is stacked in here is no longer filtering onto 17th Street West. So we have one, two, three, four, five, four... one, two, three, four cars here, and possibly we can put two more here. And there are four cars in here, and then possibly two cars that would filter through. So the sequence is you come through, you get dropped off at the vacuum area, obviously the attendant will pick up the car, bringing through the car wash. You would exit out, and we would have designated areas for drying, designated areas for parking, and this would be the area for the detail shop. The options are, you may come through here, drop off the car if you have minor detailing to be done, depending on what the severity of the detailing is possibly interior stuff. They can do it here and within that time limit, give it back to you. Otherwise, they can wash the car, and an attendant, of course, would pick up the car, queue it through, bring it in, and do the additional detailing, which, depending on the service Again, we have, as mentioned, this property line has a six-foot-high wall back here. So there's a separation between our property and the property adjacent to us.
Thank you. This is questions for staff. Is there a minimum standard on stacking of vehicles?
Yes, there is. The minimum stacking is seven cars.
And you just stated you had stacking for four.
No, we have one, two, three, four stacking here, and then adjacent to it, we can have two more here, so that's five, plus we have four in here, so that's nine. So we are passing the limit already, which is seven. We are already stacked inside the facility, so...
That's assuming, of course, that both lanes of the vacuuming are open at the same time.
We have four sets of vacuums, one, two, three, and four, so there's four working at the same time.
But it's assuming that both lanes are open and operating. Is that right?
Well, of course, we have plenty of room to stack here. We have two more areas that we can stack, so we are basically four plus two, six, plus four, that's 10. And then as it sequences through, one or two cars are continuously sequenced through here.
Were you saying the two additional cars off to the left-hand side?
Right.
But if people are pulling in from 17th, I don't imagine they're going over...
Well, when you're pulling through 17th, you have one, two, three, four, and then adjacent to that, you would have five, six, and then four in here.
So is that a stacking area in the blue?
Yes. We are told that we are capable of stacking in there, and that's the way we designed it.
Ms. Davis, is that correct according to the...
That is correct.
Okay. So the site plan reflects a minimum, at least, within the city ordinance?
Minimum of seven, but we count the drive out as well as the car wash area.
Thank you.
Where the vacuums are.
Thank you. All right, I'm not sure, are there any others?
Well, one quick question to add on to that is on the detail shop on the right. You were saying there's two ways of entering into the detail shop. One is directly off of 17th, turn into the detail shop. The other one is to go through the car wash, come back through, and then go into the detail shop. Is that correct?
Well, depends on the severity of the work that needs to be done. The sequencing and the queuing will happen with staffing and people on site. It won't happen with people driving the car. So once you come in through 17th Street, if there's no detailing done, obviously go through the sequence of car wash. But if you need to detail, you would immediately go in here and an attendant would pick up the car and bring it inside. But if you need to wash the car, you can go through the sequence, queuing, of course, with an attendant. They would go across and enter into the detail shop again. Once it's done, you would queue out and exit as attendees would queue you through that process.
So coming back around after the car wash, you would go through the staging area?
Correct.
Going into the detail shop, I'm trying to see exactly how the doors work, does a vehicle pull in nose-first and then back out, or does it pull all the way through and to the left?
Well, you can pull all the way through with the nose, and then since we have a backup area, the required backup area, you can actually back up, and you would queue out accordingly.
Okay, so you do not exit the detail shop by going to the left?
You can. We have designated a way of doing that, too.
There is a door there, correct?
We have two doors here, just as a added amenity to the exiting.
Okay, but the functionality is made to pull in forward and then back out backwards?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anything more from anyone?
Just one more question. When customers pull in, you will have an attendant marshaling traffic, or...
Yes, there would be somebody queuing and attending people as they come through.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a couple. Since you provided us with the elevations, they demonstrate a wall mass on the western edge of the property of some 18 and a half feet for the main building. Would that be about right?
It would be... Which portion? This portion?
Right. The main building, right?
Yes, that is the car wash tunnel.
And then the building to the north of that, then, would be the detail shop?
That would be the detail.
And that's not quite as high. And then there's a, what, six-foot-high masonry wall on the western property line, co-terminus with the building line?
That would be the main street wall, and we were asked to tear it down as it went towards Avenue J, so that's the tear part, but yes, the partition made the block wall between properties is right there.
Thank you. It's been a while since we've heard this. It was last June, wasn't it?
Yes.
And I think one of the questions that was asked was how many employees would typically be assigned to this center? You recall that?
Yes.
Do you remember what the answer was, though? Because I don't.
We had figured between six to eight was the range, depending on the severity of the day, you know, as far as how many cars would come in. We figured this time around would be between eight to 10 because most of it is automated as it goes through the tunnel, but because we have a detail shop, maybe one or two people will be there. So I would figure between eight to 10 employees would be on-site.
All right, very good. Any further questions from here? All right, then, thank you.
Thank you.
Have any other speakers, Mr. Ludiki?
Chuck Persikian.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Chuck Persikian. I'm from NS Corporation, and we are the people that kind of provide the equipment for the car wash, and I'm here to answer any questions. I know ATS Consulting did a noise study on the property and the blowers, and I just read it on the way here, and if there is any question on the noise, I'm ready to answer that or anything on the equipment.
All right, thank you, sir. There may be some, anyone? All right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Nancy Schmidt.
Good evening, Ms. Schmidt. I'm Nancy Schmidt. I represent the buildings at 1672 West J and 1669 West J. And my concerns are basically the same as they were previously when it was going to be a coffee shop, inappropriateness for the neighborhood traffic and noise. The neighborhood issue, as you know, is all medical professional, a couple of restaurants. My tenants are telling me that they don't want to see a car wash in that neighborhood. The other issue of the noise, I'm not an expert at car washes, so I guess I would have to rely on their study. The traffic, I did read the traffic report, which does say a signal should have been installed already, and I know that because I've been dealing with the hospital over the years. I don't know how familiar you are, if you got my letter, but part of the deal with this interception is they have to take part of my property and about 13 of my parking spaces, which, you know, is a really difficult thing in a medical building to deal with. What I had approached the hospital about many years ago was getting that piece of property that this project is located on and realigning the street over there in lieu of taking, you know, a good portion, my whole entrance. It changes our entrance to 17th Street instead of the main street, and I understand that could happen anyhow, but it takes all of my parking along the building. And then we have to accept some parking from the neighbors next door to walk across the street, go down to the signal, cross over, and have... and it's really difficult to ask people in a medical building, their patients, to have to walk next door. So that's a big concern of ours. I do have the drawings from the architect that were given to me back then of how the hospital had proposed to do it, but it's really not a very satisfactory way to do it, given the circumstances. The other would be our preference. But again, my objections with what my tenants are telling me, they don't want to see a car wash in the neighborhood, it's not appropriate, that no matter how you go about it, the traffic is going to be a nightmare. It already is there, so it's not going to be improved at all by having this facility here, so those are my things. I do have the floor for the drawings from the architect, if you'd like to see them. I made copies.
You can give them to staff if you like. Thank you. Anyone have any questions of the speaker? Just a clarification. The project as proposed does not require the installation of a signal. The mitigations are something other than that. You understand that?
Yes, I understand that the signal should have already been put in, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I have no other speakers on this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right. If there's no other speakers on this item, then it would be appropriate to close the public hearing without objection. All right. So what's your pleasure, folks?
Well, I do have to say that I am... there are a couple of things about this project that I'm just very uncomfortable about, and I know that you have done a lot of work and responded to a lot of requests that we've made. I keep looking at this traffic pattern within the... on the property, what they come in, people are trying to come out of that detail area, come out of the car wash, and it just looks to me, honestly, like a big mess. It could become a big mess. Also, I do tend to agree that I don't know that that's the right location for a car wash, because what we're trying to do is make that an office professional kind of area. I think that Mrs. Schmidt makes a couple of really good points and along my lines of thinking that if you think of that area, if you look around that area, mainly it is medical professional offices, and to put a car wash there and the traffic issues it would cause, I'm just uncomfortable with a lot of aspects of this project, so that's my comment.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I have to agree with Commissioner Smith, and I know you've done a lot of work on this project. However, the traffic pattern with a car wash, we need to be as simple as possible, or else it turns into a safety issue, and I still have some reservations with how the stacking is situated. So with that said, that's my feeling on this project.
Anyone else have a comment?
Oh, I do.
Go ahead.
I totally agree with both Commissioner Smith and... what's your name again? Poor Jonathan. Anyway, I just think that's a totally inappropriate use of that space, and a wise man said to me earlier this week that sometimes commissioners, planning commissioners, have to make decisions that are for the good of the city, and I think in this particular case, we have to decide what's good for the city of Lancaster, and to put a car wash in a location that really should be medical professional is really making me very, very uncomfortable. So I'm inclined to vote against this project.
Well, since we don't have a motion on the floor yet...
I would like to add also the same thing. I agree with the rest of the Commissioners. I don't think this is enough space, the equant, you know, so I'm going to be also opposed.
So then, if others have a comment? No?
I just had a question.
Go ahead.
And that is, we've talked about a traffic...
And that is, we've talked about a traffic signal, a couple times it's been brought up, what, what exactly would trigger actually putting a traffic signal at that intersection?
What triggered putting a traffic signal at the intersection was the development of hospital property that generated traffic to the point that it is warranted, and that is already the situation. It's been warranted for some time, and we've been working for several years trying to work with the hospital in, in getting a signal installed there. I don't know that that, I think in all honesty, it will end up being a project the city probably will have to install the signal and, and again, in cooperation with the hospital. But it's the, it, it wouldn't be necessarily the car wash that would trigger it, but all the traffic that has been generated over the last 10 years of development of the hospital property and the ambient traffic that has increased over those 10 years has put it into a position where it is currently warranted.
So if it was warranted prior to the car wash and now we're talking about approving a car wash, why is it that we're not talking about putting that signal in now?
I think it has to do with the proportional share of the cost of the signal. They would pay their traffic impact, our traffic signal impact fee and would pay their proportional share of this. If you compared their proportional share to the, what's been increased from the hospital, it wouldn't justify them constructing the signal on their own. But as, making payment of their impact fees to pay their fair share of that is the way that we viewed it as being appropriate.
So it becomes a municipal project, then, ultimately?
Yes, we would collect the traffic impact fees from this project, from the medical condominium project that is on Sixteenth, a little further east. And with those fees and other traffic signal impact fees, would construct the signal.
Yeah, well, I'll be real honest, I, I don't have that big of a problem with the traffic flow through the car wash myself, but I do have a problem with no signal at that, at that intersection. And if it should have been there before and this project comes up, I'm wondering if, is there leverage there somewhere to create that signal? The signal is the biggest problem that I have with this project.
Anything further from anyone? Dare I ask if anyone cares to offer a motion to approve this project? Doesn't appear to be any. Then as a, since we haven't ever had this happen before, Mr. Luticki, it's the Chair's opinion that, that from the views of the members, that the project would adversely affect the health, peace, comfort, and welfare of persons working in the surrounding area because of the proposed use, is in an area generally described as office professional. Therefore, the project is not compatible with the surrounding property and land uses. The project does not demonstrate adequate size and shape to accommodate the proposed use, including building placement and site circulation. And this is a opinion of mine, the applicant does, did not demonstrate the need for the project within this general marketplace. So, I believe it's appropriate, then, for the Commission to consider a resolution of denial at the next Planning Commission meeting, since we haven't voted in favor of it?
Could you repeat the question, please?
I said, yeah, I'm not going to repeat the whole thing. We would, at our next Planning Commission meeting, consider a resolution of denial of this project, since there's been no motion and no action to approve it at this meeting. Would that be appropriate?
Yes, what, what staff can do is, is we've, we've listened to, to the reasoning of it. By way of background, you have to make findings on all of the points or all of the, the requirements in the zoning code in order to grant a CUP. You only have to find negatively on one of them to, to have grounds for denial. We can take the information that you've provided, put a resolution together for your consideration, and place that before you either at your special meeting of March 11th or, or May 11th or on May the 18th.
It would be duly noticed how, as a, as a continued public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, the, the Deputy City Attorney has indicated that actually, from the Commission's standpoint, you can take action tonight on denial. We can prepare a resolution out of that, that, that formalizes that action.
All right, then, I'll offer the motion then in, to deny a conditional use permit 0705, because the project will in fact adversely affect the health, peace, comfort, welfare of persons working in the surrounding area, because the proposed use is in an area generally described as an office professional area. Therefore, the project is not compatible with the surrounding property and land uses. Secondly, the project does not demonstrate adequate size or shape to accommodate the proposed use, including building placement and site circulation. That sufficient?
That's sufficient from a legal standpoint, yes.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion from anyone? So the motion before us is to deny, so a yes vote would be to deny and no vote would be to approve. Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0 to deny the project. By way of reference to the applicant, they do have 10 working days from your action to file an appeal.
Very good. All right, thank you. We're waiting for a moment for Commissioner Jacobs to return, that's why we're, we haven't started yet. So let the record reflect Mr. Jacobs's return. And the next item or items will be new public hearings. Item three and number four, it's the intent of the Commission to hear these together. That way, the public will have an opportunity to comment on both, should they choose. Item three is General Plan Amendment 0501 and Zone Change 0501. The request is to amend the general plan from urban residential to C commercial and to rezone the property from R 7,000 to CPD commercial for a 21.32 acre gross acre site located at the northwest corner of 60th Street West and West Avenue K. And the, the second public hearing that we'll hear concurrently is the Conditional Use Permit 0712, which is a request to construct a 219,904 square foot commercial center anchored by a 1,000, or 139,410 square foot home improvement center with an attached 31,659 square foot outdoor garden center. A total of eight buildings, a separate car wash facility on the proposed site, and one of the buildings is, will contain a combined gas station, convenience store, and the other buildings will be used for retail, fast food, and a drugstore. So without objection, the public hearing is open on these two items. May we have staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two staff members will be, will be making the presentation on this. I will deal with the requested general plan amendment and zone change, and Ms. Donovan with the proposed conditional use permit application. By way of background, as the Commission, you are being asked on the general plan amendment and zone change to act as an advisory agency, meaning that your action is essentially a recommendation ultimately to the City Council for their final consideration. On the conditional use permit, you do act as the approval or denial authority on that particular action. Back in February of 2005, February 8th to be specific, the City Council initiated the revision and update to the city's general plan. As a part of that action, they, they adopted a moratorium on the filing of individual general plan amendment requests, but they retained to themselves the ability to allow in specific circumstances with a vote to allow filing of general plan amendment requests. This particular site is one of those that they chose to allow to be filed. They took that action on March the 22nd of 2005. The filing for the, for the general plan amendment and zone change on this site took place with the city on March 25th of 2005. The request, as you indicated, is to redesignate the property, which is currently, holds an urban residential designation, and change that to commercial, and to rezone the site from R 7,000, which is single-family residential, to CPD commercial plan development. As we've indicated to you in the staff report, this is one of the areas in the city that, particularly since 2000, has experienced a, a great deal of residential growth. It is an area that currently does not contain a great deal of sites designated for commercial use. One of the policies within the city's general plan, specifically Policy 16.4.2, is to promote regional community and neighborhood retail development that is needed to serve growing retail demand generated by population growth. Given the fact that this area is, is underserved, in our view, for the, for both the present and the long term by retail sites, and the fact that this site, if you look at the growth pattern of residential out in that area, it is almost located in the center of that growth pattern, both that's occurred since 2000 and also that is proposed to continue to occur in the future. The current area for the urban residential expansion in the, on the city's west side goes another mile further west out to 70th. It goes approximately a mile north to Avenue J. And obviously, as you head back towards the east, towards 50th Street West, those areas are also designated for future residential development. This site was originally and formerly part of the Meadowlark Golf Course. From a city standpoint, we feel that it is well situated, being at the corner of two major intersections or at the corner of two major streets. One of those streets, the north-south 60th Street West, is a part of the city's regional arterial system. We feel that given, given the connection and access that 60th gives as well as the East-West Street and Avenue K, we feel that it is an appropriate location for future commercial development. We feel that it is an appropriate site that over the long term could serve the neighborhoods that continue to develop around it. Therefore, on the issue of the general plan amendment and the zone change, we have recommended to you that you, that you take an action that would recommend to the Council approval of both the general plan amendment to commercial and the zone change to CPD on the site. Concluding that, I will turn it over to Sylvia Donovan in regards to the conditional use permit application.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vos and, Chairman Vos and Commissioners, AV Land is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a 219,904 square foot commercial center. The center would include various commercial buildings, parking, trash enclosures, and landscaping, and would consist of eight buildings oriented to face Avenue K and 60th West. The commercial center would consist of four drive-through services. The applicant is proposing to construct the project in two phases. Phase one would encompass the sturdily portion of the project site. The applicant would be required to construct the improvements associated with that phase, such as Avenue K and a portion of 60th West. During phase two, the construction of J 12 and the remainder of 60th Street West would be required, including the traffic signal there at the intersection of J 12 and 60th West. All the development requirements shall be met for each phase, including parking, landscaping, trash enclosures, drainage, and street improvements. Access to the project site would be provided from my six driveways, six driveways, three driveways on Avenue K, two driveway locations on 60th West, and one driveway on Avenue J 12. Left turn movements into the center would be allowed at the northerly driveway on 60th Street West and the middle driveway on Avenue K. There would be no left turns out on those driveways. The remainder, remaining driveways would be limited to right turns only. A combination right turn lane and bus turnout would be installed on the north side of Avenue K at the intersection with the first driveway west of 60th West. A left turn lane would be provided in, I just said that about the turn lanes, excuse me. A right turn lane is provided at the intersection of 60th Street West and Avenue K. 60th Street West is listed as, as an increased capacity intersection, which warrants additional improvements. An additional northbound lane would be provided at the northbound approach to the intersection, and restriping would take... Excuse me. Restriping would take place westbound on Avenue K to accommodate two left turn lanes. A left turn lane would be provided in the raised medium and 60th West at the intersection of J 12, and traffic signal would be installed at 60th and J 12. A right turn lane would be provided for the southbound side of 60th West at the intersection with Avenue K. The EIR recommended implementation of specific traffic mitigation measures, which include widening 60th Street West to provide an additional southbound through lane and a westbound left turn lane. And on Avenue K would be widened to provide an eastbound and westbound left turn lanes. For other mitigation measures, as listed in the EIR, the applicant would be required to contribute their fair share through traffic signal and impact fees. The commercial center meets the parking requirement for the shopping center. They are providing a total of 859 spaces, which exceeds the standard by one space. Adequate landscaping would be required for the project. Approximately 20 to 30 feet of landscaping would be provided on both major streets. A series of tree wells and planters would be provided throughout the parking center, and a six-foot-high screen wall to buffer existing residents to the north would be provided. An eight-foot-high screen wall to buffer residents to the west would be required. That would mean they would have to remove the existing six-foot-high wall and replace it with an eight-foot-high wall at that location. The westerly landscape buffer would be approximately 10 to 36 feet in width, and an evergreen tree would be planted every 20 feet on center along the westerly planter. Throughout the center, additional screen walls would be constructed around the trash compactors, loading areas, and to screen the drive-through aisles. Due to the proximity of the residence, residential development north and west of the project site, there are certain aspects of the project that could indirectly affect the residents, including noise from the car wash delivering loading areas and lighting from buildings and parking lots. Staff is recommending specific conditions to reduce the potential effects. As mentioned earlier, a landscape planner and screen wall would be As mentioned earlier, a landscape planter and screen wall would be placed along the northerly and westerly boundaries to screen the buildings from the residents. Signage would also be limited on the west, or prohibited on the west elevation of the building, and the delivery hours would be limited between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Although these conditions would not prevent noise, it would be limited to, noise would be limited to the more active daylight and early evening hours, and would prevent delivery activities during the normal sleeping hours when noise would be more disruptive. Total impacts from the noise from trucks would not totally be completed, because occasional noise from trucks backing up could still be audible to the residents, to the west of the delivery area. However, backup noise is intermittent and cannot be mitigated because it's an OSHA requirement. With staff has placed conditions on the project requiring building lighting to be directed onto the site and shielded from the surrounding areas, that would reduce the impacts of the project from lighting and noise. The architectural elevations, I don't know if you would change that. Submitted for the center are designed with traditional storefronts, flat roof and parapet features, varying parapet heights and geometric angles, and taller tower features are proposed to add visual interest and diversity. As part of the mitigation measures, staff is recommending fully articulated north elevation for the proposed low site, as well as the westerly elevation to match the elevations facing the east. In addition to the elevations, the applicant engaged the community, and in a community outreach in the residential neighborhood immediately west of the proposed shopping center. The outreach area consisted of 99 single-family homes, and the purpose of reaching out to the community was to explain the proposed project, determine the level of support or concern, and to address any concerns to the extent feasible as to create a project that is both beneficial to the city as a whole and a good fit for the surrounding neighbors. Of the 99 neighbors, the applicant indicates that they met with 44 of them either through face-to-face meetings or phone-mail messages. The proposed conditional use permit would establish a commercial retail center that would provide a variety of goods and services that are not currently available in this area of Lancaster. Staff finds that the proposed conditions of approval will ensure that the commercial retail center operate in a manner consistent with the contemporary retailing strategies of customer convenience. The project is consistent with the provisions of the CPD Zone and in conformance with the general plan policy 19.15 that states, "Ensure that physical attributes of the new developments, such as walls and fences, lighting, building design, and signage are attractive and consistent with the overall urban form and/or design theme of the area." Staff is recommending that the commission approve the requests subject to the proposed conditions of the site, based on the site having sufficient area to accommodate the proposed development, adequate access and services being available for the use, and the lack of significant adverse effects on the surrounding areas. Therefore, staff is recommending to the commission approval of conditional use permit number 0712, with the conditions as modified in response to the commissioner's discussion at the agenda review. Additional wording has been made. And this conditional use permit would not be in effect unless, until, general plan and zone change are in effect. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan, Mr. Ludiki. Thank you very much. Before we consider public testimony, any members have any questions with staff? None? All right. Then it would be appropriate to hear from the applicant or the representatives?
Good evening, Chairman Voss, Commissioners, staff. My name is Marin Van Ormen. I am with Civil Design and Drafting, the civil engineer, and I wanted to say a few words on behalf of the owner, AV Land. I don't really want to reiterate what they've said. Staff has given a very comprehensive report. We just wanted to say that we are, we've been working with them for several years on this project, and have gone through many iterations of the site plan, and we are in concurrence with their recommendation for approval of the project. We have our technical team here, our engineer and our architect, so if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them for you. And additionally, I'd like to turn a few minutes over to Mr. George Passantino, who is our community outreach specialist, to say a few things about our efforts in regards to this project.
Without objection, go ahead, Mr. Passantino.
Mr. Chairman and members, staff, my name is George Passantino. I'm the owner of Passantino Anderson Communications. I'm appearing here today as a city lobbyist pursuant to city ordinances, and I'm here on behalf of AV Land and their proposed project at 60th and K. As staff mentioned, my firm was retained by AV Land to conduct community outreach to the 99 homes immediately to the west of the project. Working with city staff, a map, staff developed a map to make sure that the right areas were hit, and we reached out to those members of the community. I'm here to talk just very quickly about some of our efforts thus far, and I would emphasize that it is thus far, because this is a collaborative effort that really, even beyond the ultimate approval of a project, should continue throughout the process, because issues do emerge at that point. Just want to give you a brief element about Passantino Anderson Communications. We're local here. Our offices are in the Antelope Valley. Our staff, many of them, have graduated from Quartz Hill High School. My kids are going to go to Quartz Hill High School. I teach in, my wife teaches in Westside Union School District, so we're very invested in this community. So we take our involvement in the community very, very seriously. But we also start from a premise that, when people have concerns about a project, if people support a project, if they oppose it, if they have questions, they're grounded in their core values. People, I believe, most folks don't wake up in the morning and say, "I wonder which fight to pick today." So, holding the fact that we cherish our own quality of lives, that I myself am a Westside resident, and understanding that other people cherish their quality of life, that's essentially the way we look at these situations. While we are advocates for economic development, we do so with the utmost respect, and as I said, we were very pleased to be a part of this effort and reach out to those 99 homes. The developer of this project has developed many beautiful facilities throughout the region, and so we were excited to be a part of it. Just to summarize what we did, we sent letters to each of the homes in this 99-home outreach area with a simple reply card. Kits were provided to you earlier today that sort of summarized, that have samples of the mail pieces that were delivered to those homes. We also canvassed, and the purpose of the survey and the response card was to solicit a response. We wanted to make sure that we created a two-way dialogue instead of just, you know, doing a fire and forget mail piece. We wanted to engage those folks. Again, a fairly small audience, but we wanted to make sure that we really got in as deeply as we could. We also canvassed the neighborhood and knocked door to door, and we engaged folks to the extent that we could on particular issues. You know, some folks, for instance, expressed concerns about delivery noise in times. So we worked kind of in a conduit fashion between the development team and the community to try to address those concerns when they occurred. When the issue of wall height came up, we, again, worked collaboratively, and I think that we've been able to check the box on some of the concerns that the folks have had. I do want to speak very specifically, and then I'll be seated, but I did want to just address very briefly, there is an issue associated with this project that we've been dealing with for quite some time and continue to work on. The first level of engagement that we were brought in to work on was with the neighbors immediately to the west of the project, those that would be immediately adjacent to the facility, and we spent a great deal of time with those folks, understanding that that was an opportunity for us to really, as they say, "Good fences make good neighbors," make sure that we addressed those concerns early. As a result of that effort, the project design changed a few different ways. We were trying to find ways that would address their concerns, but then also meet the city's concerns, the concerns of the fire department, and all parties involved. One such approach that we identified, and which the development team was very enthusiastic about, basically consisted of taking a 25-foot section of that property and deeding it to those four neighbors whose properties were adjacent to the dead-end cul-de-sacs. Unfortunately, due to a number of factors, that approach, which we were all very supportive of, it just didn't work. So we had to revert back to a former design, but in doing so, we always tried to make sure that when issues came up, we spoke immediately to those folks in particular. But again, we tried to create a, you know, a collaborative effort. So with that, as I said, I don't want to belabor the points of the outreach. You do have summary reports that provide the material, that have the material there in front of you, and I'd be happy also to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passantino. There may be some questions. Anyone?
I had one quick question. We did receive this publication today when we walked in, about 5:30. I would love to have gotten this well in advance, because we do read everything, we go through it, we love to get all the information pros and cons, so that we can formulate opinions. Why would it arrive to us as late as it?
It arrived as late as it is, quite honestly, because the engagement continued up as late as possible. I would agree, typically, we'd like to have it at least a week prior, so that you folks have a chance to digest it, and I do apologize for the lateness of that report, but again, we wanted it to be as complete as possible. Thank you.
Go ahead. As far as the negotiations with the citizens, the residents on the west side, has that ended, or what resolution did you come up with?
Well, you know, as I said, we would like to see this be a collaborative process throughout. Again, theoretically, even beyond approval, because even through the construction process, there are issues that emerge. If you're speaking specifically to the particular issue of the wall, or just in general? My understanding is that, based upon the consensus of issues related to fire, city concerns, et cetera, that the gate approach is the desired approach. That being said, we even talked about it today. Some of the concerns with a gate had to deal with things such as noise. Perhaps there are some design elements and shielding elements that can be accommodated to make that possible.
Could we have the visual of the site plan, please? So you're talking about, and I don't know what the street names are, I don't know if they're identified here, but you're talking about the, hmm, yeah, two dead-end streets that Mr. Ludiki is pointing out to you there?
Yeah, that's correct, and in fact, the gate approach does improve fire access over its current state. That being said, it will also include a buffer on the developer's side of the project, again, to try to be as good a neighbor as possible, but given a variety of constraints, including concerns related to fire, this is a desired approach.
So, when you originally approached the residents with the idea, did you not know all the factors attached with what you were proposing to the neighbors?
Well, we were, quite honestly, trying to find solutions, and that was an approach that we wanted to sort of throw up against the wall. And we got some initially receptive results from the neighbors. We took that to the city, and again, we had some initially receptive feedback as it related to that approach, but upon further review, other issues, particularly, as I mentioned, fire came up, that just, you know, created some concerns.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Passantino, since the design, there have been many design revisions, I guess, as it relates to the street issue that we're now talking about in the wall, right?
That's correct.
In your opinion, who made the final determination of the design before us tonight?
I was not in that meeting, but I would suggest that it was probably led by the city, but in conjunction with departments and the project team.
Okay, thank you. Since you're not involved with the conditions of approval, I won't ask you those questions, but I will pose a question to you. In a typical commercial development of this magnitude, when outreach is done, is it not typical that the region you look at is not typically isolated to one zone? It's a circle maybe a mile, half a mile wide?
It does certainly vary from project to project. I mean, we've had projects where it's fairly adjacent, but we've also had some that would be larger.
But in this case, the neighbors to the east, nor to the south, nor just only to the west were engaged, is that right?
Correct. And again, that was a map that defined that.
Pardon?
There was a map that was created that defined that.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have any questions? All right, thank you. Have another speaker?
Mr. Chairman, there are two that list themselves as representing the applicant. I'll call them, but I think they ought to be subject to the time limit. That's my opinion.
Typically, give the applicant full latitude on a project of this size, so we can...
I don't know if they are adding additional or not, but...
I would hope that they wouldn't repeat what's already been heard.
The first, Mark Mallaby.
I'm Mark Mallaby, and I'm with the architects office that worked on this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions related to the architecture.
All right, just one moment, please. Any? You received, you received today, or yesterday, or Friday, a revised set of under the conditional use permit?
Yes.
You've had an opportunity to review those?
Yes, I certainly have.
And you have no objections, and the applicant has no objections to those conditions and the implementation on this project?
No, no.
Okay. For instance, on Pad C, when the project was, the latest design did not show a loading zone for the CVS Pharmacy?
Yes.
But we've made that...
We'd be happy to add one, yes.
How do you propose to do that, with the site plan the way it is?
Can I have the laser pointer? Here's a zone over here by the compactor.
Please, if you could, speak into the microphones.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, there's a zone over here by the compactor, and we would reconfigure that to incorporate the loading zone. There's a lot of area there that we can work with.
So you're suggesting north of the barrier wall that's adjacent to the trash compactor?
Yes.
How much, so how would you get a semi into that location? Since it's a hammerhead location, how do you get it in there and get it out?
We've got a, you know, fairly wide aisle here and here, but they would probably come around there and back in.
Since this is identified as CVS, why wasn't it put on the site plan in the beginning? Because all CVSs have a loading zone, don't they? I'll take that as an answer. On the site plan at the, at the Lowe's, on the, what would be southwest end where the loading dock is, there seems to be some other unidentified lines on my site plan, south of the 12-foot-high barrier wall. What's that?
That is trash compactor.
Pardon?
That's trash compactor.
So the trash compactor is sitting out there without any barrier around it?
Yes, but we can change that.
Pardon?
Yes, but we can change that. It's in the conditions.
And the outside storage containers on the site plan, those are eliminated as well?
Yes, we'll eliminate those.
How do you propose to deal with the, what appears to me to be, switchgear on the back of Major A on the west end of it and the north of shops?
We've illustrated that on the site plan, but they are incorporated into the building design. The building design is comprehensive and they are full height to the parapet. They're not tacked on.
Okay.
Then they add, you know, massing and articulation.
So for instance, we've got a couple of photos here somewhere that I want to show you, and then you can tell me if that's what you're talking about.
Okay.
So you will not have that on your site anywhere?
It will not look like that.
That's not the question.
No.
Will you have something like that on your site anywhere?
No.
Okay. Or like that?
No.
Okay. Or like that?
No.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? The question is, what would it look like? I don't think you have any.
Stop on that one. Can you go forward?
No.
This is the elevation of it. So you can see that those corner elements there are those corner elements there, and that wall and those doors, that wall goes all the way up to the parapet. So it's completely integrated into the design.
Very good. Thank you. On building pads, B like boy, D like dog, there's what, 24-foot loading areas? Would that be about right?
Yes.
The site plan identifies that as a McDonald's. Are you aware of how McDonald's delivers their products from their vendor? Do they deliver it in 24-foot boxes?
No. No, it comes in some high.
Comes in a semi, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So those particular sites, the way they're designed, do not accommodate a loading dock for the typical way the vendors deliver to fast food restaurants. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So where would they deliver? They'd be parked in the driveway then to deliver and blocking either parking spaces or driveway, right?
Oh, no. I'm sorry, I'm going to pass this side circulation question over.
We just want to be clear on what we're considering approval on.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Imada Bujouda. I'm civil engineer on the project.
Thank you.
We have been working with staff for quite a while to come up with a circulation plan. We have revised medians and driveways and parking stalls. If the requirement is to add a parking for a semi, we can certainly work with staff on revising a certain area around the pad in order to accommodate that.
So given my question and your response, you would have to redesign three of the eight pads at least to accommodate semi truck delivery?
Right. It could be as far as just removing a parking stall. It could be moving a drive aisle.
I'm not attempting to tell you how to design it. I'm just pointing out what I consider to be a shortcoming in the design.
Yes.
When you look at, and we'll just continue on with semis if you want. If you look at pad E like Edward, same situation as well as where the fuel storage tank delivery is, it looks to me like a dead end. Now, maybe I'm wrong, but typically, fuel storage is truck and trailer. So I don't know how they turn around in there.
Again, to be specific, I want to make sure that I'm being very specific. The revisions are not to the overall site plan. The revisions might be to specific areas around these pads. When we do the final plan and we will work with staff on every movement of trucks, driveways, if we have to, again, if we have to remove a parking stall or move a drive aisle to accommodate a certain turn radius, we can certainly do that.
Typically, that's done before the commission ever sees it, is it not?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
It seems like you mentioned staff quite a bit. This is not necessarily staff's project. Of course, they would assist you with it, but when it comes to us, it needs to be, obviously, you have some shortcomings with it, so it's kind of your deal.
Absolutely. We work with them and under, you know, free time with their recommendations and standards. We have standards we have to comply with.
Thank you. Any other speakers, proponents?
Ken McKentley.
Yes, my name's Ken McKentley. I'm McKentley Malak Architects. I'm also here to answer any other questions you might have. Just a real quick follow-up on the semis and the fast food pads. We obviously can work and do everything we can to create a loading stall. I don't think, in my experience, I've ever designed a fast food pad with a full semi loading stall, but we can certainly see what we can do. As you know, typically, the semis do pull up in front earlier than general business hours and drop load. But we'll certainly do what we can to see how we can accommodate it so it doesn't block traffic.
You are aware the conditions of approval have limited loading or limited delivery hours?
Yes, I do. Six to nine.
And typically, they're limited to the hours of operation of the vendor that's proposed on this project. So what you're saying, if I understand you correctly, is that you've never designed a fast food use with adequate loading for a semi, wherein the majority of deliveries of the vendors to a fast food come out of semi, right?
You have a good point about the hours, and that's something that would have to be addressed. I agree.
All right. Thank you. Any other speakers and proponents?
You have quite a stack of speakers, Mr. ...
All right.
Anthony Mark.
Before we continue, and I should point out to the speakers that are here, once the folks in favor and opposed speak, then the applicant has an opportunity for rebuttal. So there's a process here, and we appreciate your consideration this evening. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Ludicke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got all of the speakers indicating as favoring first. Anthony Mark.
Welcome. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. How are you tonight? I'm in favor for this project for a couple of reasons. I'm in construction myself, and we do a lot of work on the west side of town, and we need something like this on this side of town. It takes a lot of time to drive all the way across to the east side, back and forth, fighting traffic down Avenue K to the Lowe's on the opposite side of town. So I'm for this project. I've also seen several projects that this developer has done in the valley, and have added a lot of beauty to our valley. So I just wanted to voice my opinion that I'm in favor for this, and I appreciate the time that you've given me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Lemon.
My name is Sharon Lemon. I'd like to thank the council for hearing me out. I am in favor of this project. I work for Mayflower Gardens, which is doing some projects, and we go through a lot of lumber and a lot of supplies, fixing up old to make it new. The Lowe's would be fantastic to have it closer and have the money go to our city as opposed to driving somewhere else to get the materials that we need. The seniors in the development, also on CVS, I believe, project, the pharmacy would make it closer so that they don't have to take buses and medic rides to try to get the prescriptions. So I am, and I live in Quartz Hill, on the home park, and I am highly in favor of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
LaJoyce McKenny.
Name, Ms. McKenny?
Lee Barron.
Mr. Barron.
Good evening, Chairman Boss and Vice Chair, Mrs. Smith. How are you? Good evening. A few months back, I signed a petition opposing this project, but it wasn't this project that I was signing for. And I believe that it was in, my signature should not be on this petition, so I'd like to have it removed, noted to the board in that we are, the chair, as chairman of the Quartz Hill Chamber of Commerce, we are in favor of this project. As a resident of Lancaster, I used to play golf with my son at this golf course, and I know at one time it was going to be an 18-hole golf course, and we were kind of looking forward to that. But those days are long over, and this end of town, west side of town, could use a project like this. Lowe's traditionally is a clean outfit, very professional people working there, very courteous to all its customers that come in. So myself, I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
I do have a question. Because we did receive copies of the petitions, and there was 690 signatures or so on that petition, but we did notice that the headings on the petitions were different. One was specifically opposing the 60th and K project, while the other was more west-side. It wasn't as clear. When you were approached to sign that petition, was it, how was that presented to you? Or did you just assume that they meant Walmart? Or did they actually tell you this is not a petition?
Keep in mind, we're not, to answer your question, no, we were not told that it was for the 60th and K project. It was not necessarily opposing the Walmart project either. It was opposing the rezoning of a particular piece of land, but we're not here to talk about that. And that's what we believe we were signing for.
That's another day.
That's another day.
Okay. I look forward to another day.
Yeah. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Next speaker.
Rochelle Phillips.
Ms. Phillips?
I support the project, but I do not have anything to contribute at this time.
You need to address your comments to the microphone so we can record it, please. Thank you. And welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. I support this project, but I do not have any further comments at this time.
Very good. Thank you. Next speaker.
Sheldon Bush.
Mr. Bush?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commission. I'm in favor of this project completely, 100%. I'm facing adjacent, just east directly of the project, my back balcony will be looking there at the Lowe's center. In my opinion, it would probably be better for the community to have these resources to us than another 100 and 200 homes. So I do support this project, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Larisha Bryant.
Ms. Bryant? Go ahead, next one.
Kazuna Bryant.
Welcome.
I think it's important that we continue to attract business, businesses to Lancaster that are offering jobs for our residents. At this time of economic uncertainty, it seems that we should allow new businesses to open up that are going to provide several jobs for people who desperately need them. When more people have jobs, they have money to spend or reinvest in the community. They help keep other businesses in business when they spend their money at their stores. Thus, several people can benefit from just one job. The EIR stated that this project would bring approximately 345 new jobs to the west side. Please don't turn these jobs away when we need them so badly. Please give this project a recommendation for approval. I also wanted to thank AV Land for the efforts they took to get the input of the neighbors. They sent out letters with a reply card asking us to share ideas on how to make this a good project for the community. They also kept us informed as design changes occurred. Specifically, I live on the end of a cul-de-sac that apparently will be redesigned when that, when the project is built to accommodate fire trucks. Fire trucks. The developer kept us informed and sought our input as changes occurred in the design. We appreciate being kept informed and commend the developer in his efforts to work with the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Doug Burgess.
Mr. Burgess, welcome.
My name is Doug Burgess. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, staff. I likewise, with Lee Barron, am a little concerned over this petition we signed, and it's very misleading. Our position is very strong on a certain area to the west of this, or to the south of this area, and it shouldn't be reaching. And I'd like to have, on behalf of the council members for Quartz Hill, all five of us would like to have our names removed from this petition if it's feasible, at least for the purpose of this hearing. We believe that we were involved with the situation at another corner to the south again, and not, you know, we've got enough in our whole little area to take care of. We don't need to reach all over town. And I just want to have it understood that there was a misunderstanding, and it's a reason, I'm 67 years old, and the second petition I signed, and here you see what happens. Now I'm having to make an excuse for why I signed it. And I, if I signed it, I had my head in the wrong place. Not opposed to what they're trying to do, but obviously, you don't stop projects in residential. Where do you put them? An industrial park? I don't know. But my history is very simple, that we'll stick to our neighborhood. The town council itself voted very specifically on certain things regarding the project to the south, and we're not reaching, we have not taken a position on this project, and I'm not saying opposed or against or in favor of. My personal opinion, I will not at this time be involved, because I'm representing the council, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Any other speakers in favor?
Craig Sinclair.
Mr. Sinclair, welcome.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I just want to say as a homeowner on the west side, that I'm in support of the project. I think it's going to be great. Can't wait till there's a Lowe's closer to my home so I can pick up all my stuff nearby.
Jennifer Sinclair.
Welcome, Ms. Sinclair.
Good evening. I'm Diddle. My husband. Looking forward to having something close for all the home improvement projects for our new home.
Thank you.
Deanne Sinclair.
Another Ms. Sinclair. Welcome.
Lots of Sinclairs, huh? I am excited to have a Lowe's near. I also live on the west side. I'm also in favor of more... I'm also in favor of more jobs. I know many people are having a difficult time with jobs, getting jobs. I'm also looking forward to having the roads improved. I know there's a lot of congestion over in that area, I know it's a little bit further down from the high school, but when I was dropping my kids off at the high school, just that whole area, I'd sometimes even go around over to K and just anywhere trying to get in there, and it's very difficult, some of the driving conditions during school hours, and it would be really nice to have those roads improved in that area.
Thank you. Thank you.
Larry McKenney Senior.
Mr. McKenney?
Welcome, sir. Good evening, Ben. I'm for the project, and I'm also against crime, which I've been told by the opposition that this project would cause crime, but if we don't have jobs for our people who live in the neighborhood, you'd only go have crime. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Janice Neblock.
Evening, and welcome.
Hello, good evening. My name's Janice Neblock, and I grew up and lived in the Antelope Valley my whole life. I strongly support the proposed Lowe's CBS shopping center. I work in the construction industry, and I know there's a lot of workers right now that are out of work and struggling, and this project will help create the construction jobs, and also create jobs for those to work in the stores. It will also benefit those of us who live near the area with the convenience of shopping. So I'm in support of the shopping center. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Richard Herrera.
Mr. Herrera?
Rick Norris.
Mr. Norris. Welcome.
Now that I've had the opportunity to sit up there and have comments addressed and for and against, but one of the things that I wanted to do is that, I've known Ben Sayani for over 20 years, back to my days when I ran the building industry. Ben is one of the few developers that not only bought land, stayed during the good times, stayed during the bad times, but more importantly, he's a resident of the Antelope Valley. He stayed because of vision, and that vision is about making and growing a community, creating jobs, creating quality shopping centers, and he's committed, he and his family have committed to building the best shopping centers. He built 10th and L, he built N and 50th, and we shop constantly at the Albertsons at 50th and N, and it's a quality center. What I'm most in favor of is having Lowe's out there, because I'm tired of driving eight miles across town with as many signals and stop signs as we have in the valley now. It takes 30 minutes to go to Lowe's to get the sprinklers that the gardener keeps hitting. So it's, it's important to me to be able to shop locally, stay off the streets, reduce the emissions, reduce the traffic out on the streets, and this center, I believe, will do so. He, he's patiently waited for four years. For four years, he was placed in a general plan amendment. There's been, at one time, there was a major grocery store that was going to relocate to that shopping center, but as time and the economy has changed, so has the major grocery stores. They, in turn, make us have to drive two, three, four miles away to have our families shop. But more importantly, Ben gives to the community, he gives back to the community. Every time that everyone has asked him to donate to the Kiwanis Club, or rotary to this charitable foundation, he has always managed to do so, even in bad times. So for me, he, he said tonight, will you come and say good things? I said, no. I'll come and tell him the truth, why you've been an important member of this community for these years, why you, why you build a quality center, and I think we owe him the jobs and the opportunity to help improve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have another speaker?
George Atkinson.
Evening, Mr. Atkinson.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners and staff. The staff definitely knows who I am, I've been working in this valley for 25 years as a contractor and a developer. I am a resident of Lancaster on the west side of the project that's before you. I am the contractor of it for Mr. Ben Sayani. I've known Ben for years, I built the one for him on Allen 10th. The reason why I'm here is I personally believe it's the right thing for the area. The same problems that, you know, that you may hear from the people that oppose this project is the traffic. Well, they all come right past my house, going the opposite direction. It'd be nice to have something out, a little bit further out on the west side, that the residents can drive to, that will alleviate some of the, the congestion. I live about 30th. So I personally feel that would be great for the community, the jobs, needless to say in the construction industry, you've heard that already spoken tonight, I've had to lay off 47 percent of my personnel, that's standard in this industry, everybody's going through it, not just in construction and everything, so jobs for construction would be ideal, jobs for the people that live out in that community will be ideal. I just strongly support the project. The quality of the project will be a beautiful project, the architect has designed a wonderful project, and I think it's a project that everyone would be proud of. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Do you have another speaker in favor?
David Sinclair.
Mr. Sinclair.
Evening Commissioners, I think it's no secret that I was doing community outreach work in the area, but I'm speaking tonight, George spoke on behalf of Pasadena Anderson and AV Land, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself as a citizen of Lancaster, particularly the west side, and I know for myself that, we all know that there's no commercial out on the west side of town, and anytime we need to go anywhere to Home Depot, Lowe's, or whatever, it means traveling east or south to Palmdale, east of Lancaster or south of Palmdale, and it would be nice, I think, to have something out on the west side. Sorry about that. Also, being on the General Plan Citizens Advisory Committee, I can tell you that there was consensus on that committee about going forward in the city with the next general plan, using the balanced growth concept, and that requires us to have commercial, near, residential, where people don't have to be traveling so far, and it also fits in well with the state's new plans, with their AB 32, where they're trying to reduce the vehicle miles traveled in order to reduce greenhouse gases. I'm not an environmentalist, anybody that knows me, but I think the concept of having employment opportunities, and shopping opportunities, and schools, and, and residential, trying to get those things balanced so that people have those, those services within close proximity of their home, just makes for an overall better community. And, and lastly, I just wanted to say, I, in doing my outreach, I spoke with, obviously, a number of the residents in the area, and many who will probably be speaking tonight in opposition, and I, I do sympathize with those that, that say that they moved out there with the anticipation that this was residential property, it was going to be developed residential, and now they feel like the rug is being pulled out from them. I, I sympathize with that, but at the same time, we have to, when dealing with land use issues, ask ourselves, how much control does an individual have over his neighbor's property? And if a person wants to move out to the edge of town and be at the edge of town, I think it's incumbent upon that individual, that when the town catches up with them, it's incumbent upon that individual to move and not to impose development restraints on the rest of the community so that they can maintain in perpetuity at the edge of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker in favor?
Khalifa Abdullah.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Khalifa Abdullah, and I live in this area, and I'm very glad that this developer is bringing this project to this particular area, because as we all know, in Lancaster there are not that many jobs, and to have more jobs coming into this area, I think that's a great thing. And there are always going to be people for things and against, as we know, and I'm for this project, and I hope it's, we'll be able to get this project in Lancaster to put more jobs in Lancaster for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Another in favor?
Kalima Abdullah.
Just say it again.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the, the speaker's listing as in favor. I have one speaker who has not indicated one way or the other, the remaining have indicated as opposed.
All right. Why don't we hear from that one then?
Frank Su.
Su?
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Frank Su, I live in the west, west side of that shopping center, if you want to build that shopping center. I would like to mention the air pollution, because I, as far as I know, there's going to be a gas station, and I don't see it's going to be healthy for the neighbor, nearby. And also, during the construction phase, this project is going to generate air pollutions. The project could result in increased air pollution due to the project-related traffic. So I, I kind of concern the, the house in the neighborhood, so I, I really oppose this project. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Dr. Donald Garant.
Dr. Garant, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioners. I'm glad to be here tonight. I am the first of the speakers, we, we came to the planning commission, and so we came with a plan, and I'm the first of several speakers that will be talking to you why we oppose this project, and also each one will have a different reason or area that they are addressing. I want first to say that I'm the co-chairperson of the Save Our Neighborhood at 60th and K Committee, and we have a number of persons who are here who are in opposition to this. I noticed with interest that the public relations firm in the employ of the developer, two persons spoke about that, and also the results were mentioned by the planning staff, but they were notably vague, I just asked you to ask yourself, what were the results? They said there were 99 homes, and I, I'm one of the persons in those 99 homes, I live one house down from the western boundary of this project. No one contacted me in any way, and they failed to say how many of the people they contacted were in favor or opposed to it, or how many people they talked to, and they gave you the impression they've worked with a large number of people to mitigate the plans, but they gave you no facts. On the other hand, I'm part of a group of unpaid people who went out and we canvassed to the north, to the south, to the east, and to the west, on both sides of 60th and on Avenue K, and I came back, we, we have turned in to the staff 1,800, I'm sorry, 1,084 petitions of people who say, we oppose this position. There were two petitions, and one of them plainly said that we oppose development all along the 60th corridor, and so if there were some people who signed that without understanding it, you know, my apologies, but, but I know I myself went door-to-door on four occasions, and there was one person who said, nope, I'm, I'm all for this, I think that's a great idea, okay, he didn't sign, and there was one other person who said, well, I don't know, I'll have to think about it. But of all of the homes that I knocked on the door and what they were willing to sign a petition, they were all in favor, about 97 percent of them, I'm sorry, were opposing this project. So I am the, again, we canvassed to the north, to the south, to the east, and the west, and came back with almost 1,100 people opposing it. The neighborhood does not want this here. The other thing I want to say as one of the first speaks, or points is the drainage. At the present time, this area is about three feet higher than, than my street and, and my yard. Because it's open land, the rainfall is absorbed. Once it is all either rooftops or paved area, the water is going to run onto 60th Street, and then to, there's a gentle slope to the south, and it will end up basically creating flooding at the Sundown Elementary School, which is a quarter mile away from the northern boundary, and there will be all kinds of, the flooding and the water will be a real problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Chairman, he indicated he had several that were, were going to speak on him. If he, if he's got those people, and they've turned in a card, I just assume they come up.
I understand.
So you can get it organized.
If you have it in a sequence, Doctor, that you wish to present it, or as the cards are turned in as satisfactory? All right, why don't we just go ahead then? Thank you.
Okay. Norma Garant.
Ms. Garant, welcome.
Hello Commissioners. My concern is this, and I present it to the commission, I don't know what report you received later, like this evening, but I would like to ask the question, was the safety of the children which attend the nearby school a quarter of a mile away, has that been taken into consideration? Because we, my concern as a parent, and on behalf of some of my neighbors on my street, there are many children around, and does that report take into consideration the children? That's what I would like to ask.
And just for your information, this is not a question-and-answer session, this is a public hearing. We take input, if we wish to ask questions, we do, otherwise, we just take the public Next speaker, please.
Joshua Halopko.
Welcome, sir, I won't try that.
It's, it's very, very tricky to pronounce, it's pronounced Halopko, but that's okay.
Say it again, please.
Joshua Halopko, it's H-L, it's, yeah, it's very, you'll never see it again, I'm the last person that has that last name in the world.
Oh, I don't know.
Mind you, I'm a teacher, so it's even more fun. Born and raised here in the Antelope Valley, and I actually lived on the east side town when it was a good part, when it wasn't, you know, totally awful, over on Challenger and J before they, and I've personally seen how gas stations and car washes have totally ruined and ransacked our neighborhood growing up. I mean, the car wash across the street from 8th Street East dumped thousands of gallons of water down our street every, every week. I mean, it's supposed to reclaim its own water, and it didn't, it just dumped it down our street, and it was just flooded the whole street, probably once a week. Not only that, as I drive across town, there's so many vacancies already. I mean, there's a vacancy on Challenger Way and Avenue J now, there's a vacancy on Avenue I and 10th Street West, there's vacancies all around the Target Shopping Center, behind it, next to the old Ralphs. There's so many vacancies, and now you're opening up more stores? There's already stores we can fill. I mean, the Office Depot is supposed to go to, next door to the Kmart, it's never been filled, it's just sitting there vacant again. You want to, we don't need more stores when we have all these vacancies, we're, we're having like urban decay already at this point. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous, I've never spoken in front of the council. In our current financial situation, I mean, we have Lowe's and Lowe's and Home Depot and Home Depot and Home Depot already, I passed by a Lowe's and a Home Depot on my way home already, why do I need one by my house? I mean, if I'm going to go to one, I want to go by the, Lowe's by the Home Depot so I can shop around, I don't want to just go to one, I want to be able to shop so I can get the best deals. Not to, I hate car washes, I hated that one growing up, I'm sorry. We already have, I mean, I just bought this house a month ago, and I don't have enough money to shop at Lowe's anyways, and people who, that neighborhood's, has so many vacancies, anyone who buys houses in there now isn't going to be able to afford to really do a lot of big home projects. I mean, I'm just doing the little things right now I can afford to fix it up, like he said, putting a sprinkler head in, but I don't need a big old Lowe's to just buy one sprinkler head here and there, right across the street from my house, I'll just get it on the way home from work. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak, and I think that's about all I have. I really am opposed to this project, if you couldn't tell.
Thank you, sir. Do we have another speaker?
Loretta Berry.
Ms. Berry? Welcome.
Hello, good evening. I'm Loretta Berry. Born and raised in Lancaster. I'd like to start off saying that we hope that we, the people, what we have to say will not be falling on deaf ears. It's imperative that somebody speak up for those that can't and those that won't, that a voice be heard for good government and sensible growth. We got to make this clear, that we're not against growth and economic development in the Allen Valley, but it has to be done in a sensible manner. What happened to the infill? What happened to, you know, things like that? The urban decay and economic blight has not been addressed nearly enough. I've got a current list going of, like this gentleman started with, all the empty buildings in the Allen Valley, all over the Allen Valley. People talk about all the jobs that are going to be created. Businesses are laying people off. They're not hiring people. They're laying people off. Stores are closing all over the Allen Valley. We've had three, five restaurants close over by the mall. We've had businesses close all over the place. And you want to build more shopping centers for them to stand there empty? It just doesn't seem sensible. It just does not seem sensible. I want to address the environmental impact report. I wrote, had 16 points on my comments to the environmental impact report. None of them were addressed adequately, in my opinion, were answered adequately. I brought up the fact about valley fever, and the answer I got was evidently the commenter doesn't know that valley fever is in the San Joaquin Valley. This does not include Lancaster. I've got report after report from Los Angeles County Health Department and other reports. You can find them all on the internet that say that the, this fund is in the, is in the Los Angeles County, in areas of the West Valley and the Allen Valley. For them to say that they're, to just completely dismiss it is ridiculous. The other thing I brought up, again, is the economic and urban blight. It's got to be stopped. Somebody has to stop this. Couple of gentlemen said, like you said, if I want to buy a sprinkler, there's Wolf's Lumber in Quartz Hill. It's been there for 50 years, less than two miles away, three miles away from this proposed center. There's a Home Depot and a Lowe's both within five miles of this center. Also, there are 10 pharmacies, approximately 10 pharmacies, within a five-mile radius of this new CVS that you want to put in, that there's a CVS one mile away down the street. This has got to stop. It's ridiculous. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, folks. This is not an entertainment venue. This is not a theater. So if you continue to clap, we will conclude the hearing and clear the room. All right, folks? I know you're adamant about something and you have passion, and that's fine. Please address the chair through the speaker. All right? Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Matthew Pareda or Pareda?
That may be the... Take your time, sir. Take your time. Is it Mr. Pareda, is it?
Pareda, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Please proceed.
Good evening, Chairman Vos, committee members and staff. My name is Matthew Pareda, and I live in Lancaster. I would like to talk about the crime and loitering as a result of the proposed shopping center at West Sixtieth and Avenue K. A shopping center will inherently attract undesirable elements such as the homeless, loiterers, sexual predators, and so forth. This project has one huge additional disadvantage, a Lowe's Home Improvement Center, which there is one about five miles away. This type of home improvement center is a hangout for day laborers, a lot of whom are homeless, illegal aliens. They could be sleeping behind these big boxes behind the stores, in the large trash dumpsters, and digging in the trash cans behind restaurants for food, or infiltrating the nearby residential neighborhoods. These large shopping centers also provide a convenient stopoff for the school kids going to and coming from school to buy cigarettes, candy, and other fattening fast foods the kids don't need. I also work as a local law enforcement within the area, and I have worked within the area. And I have seen that in generally in commercial areas such as Walmart, Lowe's, Home Depot, there is an escalating amount of crime within the parking lots, robberies, thefts, vehicle thefts. So in putting a Lowe's in the area or the other shops within the area, we'll substantially see an increase in crime within those areas there. I also feel that, you know, everything is within a five-mile radius, post office, shopping centers, gas station. We have an ARCO right down L-8 and Sixtieth, which is well enough. And also to address crime again, response times to whether the business were to call, some of the gas stations were to call, are going to be very slow because priorities do take precedent, people that are in trouble, people that need help. And I personally have seen that the law enforcement isn't large enough to handle every single problem in Lancaster in a good fashion amount of time. Large businesses also create a lot of juvenile loitering, drug activity, vandalism. There's a lot of remote areas within Lancaster that have a low volume in crime, and one of them is, I believe, Sixtieth and K, and we like to keep it that way. Another thing, if, say, for example, someone were to run from a local law enforcement officer within the area, or there was a crime that occurred, where would they jump to? To one of our houses within the area, and that would be a bad thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, or your comments, sir. Have another speaker pose?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Sofia Pareda.
Pareda? Welcome.
Hello, Chairman Vos, committee members and staff. My name is Sofia Pareda, and I live in Lancaster. I would like to speak about trash and littering caused by this proposed shopping center at West Sixtieth and Avenue K. One of the most noxious aspects of large shopping centers is the trash and the litter that is generated by this type of project. Much of this trash and litter that is generated in the project does stay within the boundaries of the project, but sometimes scattered by the wind, car traffic, rats, and so forth to contaminate our surrounding neighborhoods. All you have to do to verify this statement is to drive through and around one of these big box complexes. The normal operation of this type of projects includes such ISRs as plastic bags, which some call the Flower of the Valley, polyurethane cups, straws, and paper wrappers from the fast-food restaurants, wrapping paper and cardboard boxes from Lowe's and other stores, and trash dumped into parking lots by inconsiderate customers. Also, Lowe's shopping carts will end up on our residential property and in our streets. Home improvement stores such as Lowe's and Home Depot are a magnet and a hangout for day laborers and many other undesirables, such as purse snatchers, homeless that sleep in trash dumpsters, and scrounge for food from the trash cans behind the fast-food places, sexual predators that prey on schoolchildren that walk to and from school, and various other kinds of low-life criminals. These types are notorious trash producers. Is it any wonder why we do not want this project? We do not need this project and do not want it in our neighborhood, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. I don't know if the timer was on that last time, but thanks. Next speaker, please.
John Dixon.
Mr. Dixon, welcome.
Good evening. My name is John Dixon, and I want to thank you, Chairman, and committee members and the staff, especially you, Chairman. I appreciate your comments earlier on when you was talking about the layout of this proposal. Anyway, what I'd like to talk about tonight is the location for this proposed shopping center. Why here? Why in the residential area? There's tons of vacant spots you could go to, just right across the street, over towards Sixtieth and I. It's completely open. It's not residential. When I moved in in April of 2005, I had asked the question, what was this all, was this all residential? Was it going to stay residential? And they told me, yes, it was going to stay residential. Well, obviously, they probably knew about these plans when I was asking them. I was informed that it was zoned residential, and there was going to be houses built over there, and the houses were already being planned. Little did I know at that point in time that Ben, and I can't think of the gentleman's name, but the AB Land Company had already petitioned, and I heard it tonight, he's already petitioned at that point in time when I moved in and asked these questions, to have this property changed. I'm sure that the builders, my builders, were aware of it, and they probably just lied to me. The property in question is intensely surrounded. We had nice residence, homes there. I mean, they were $400,000 homes. It cost me to move into that place. The average age of that home is less than four years old. They're one to four years old. Most of the homeowners removed out there, I moved out there specifically because it was away from the city. It was away from things like the Lowe's and other businesses, because I don't like living around that kind of an environment. I want to be away as far as I can, and still be in somewhat of a city environment. Anyway, I guess that's about it. You got the idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Another speaker, please.
Paul Jennings.
Mr. Jennings? Welcome again, Mr. Jennings.
Good evening, Chairman Vos, committee members and staff. My name's Paul Jennings. I'm pretty much opposed to this project. First of all, I'd like to, well, two comments. One, we're covering two subjects, or two items on the agenda, items three and four. Seems like we ought to have six minutes each. Item two, I'd like to take exception to the comments made by the gentleman back here, Mr., I can't pronounce his name, but he's the head of the public relations firm.
Passantino.
Passantino. My apologies, sir. How many homes, home improvement stores, convenience stores, and drugstores that sell liquor and fast-food restaurants do we need? After a home is a year or so old, and most of the honeydews and backyard landscaping, covered patios, concrete walks have been completed, how many times a month, or even a year, do you need to go to a home improvement store? Most of the homes in the area of West Sixtieth and K are in the two- to five-year-old range and don't need daily trips to the home improvement store. The residents can combine their trip to a home improvement store with other shopping, like grocery shopping and whatever. The closest Home Depot is only four miles away. Closest Lowe's is five miles away. It's, if it's too inconvenient to drive that far, they need to move closer to the noise, crime, congestion, and hubbub of the city. The same can be said for the CVS pharmacy at the corner of West Sixtieth and K. It's only three miles to the nearest CVS at West Thirty and Avenue L, and there are eight other drugstores within four to five miles. You can hardly go to town without passing two or three of them. Why do we need more close fast-food stores? With this project one-quarter mile from an elementary school, and one mile from a high school, we need, we don't need more readily available obesity joints to tempt our schoolchildren. We don't need a strip mall at every corner like they have on the east side. We moved out on the edge of town to get away from all of that. If the regulators, if these speculators are looking into the future to make their fortune and let them go further west and north where there's still plenty of time. So please, save our neighborhood at West Sixtieth and K by voting down this potential neighborhood. We do not need this project, and we do not want it in our neighborhood.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much. Sorry to run over.
Another speaker, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Amelia Jennings.
Welcome, Ms. Jennings.
Is it true we only get to speak once? Is it true we only get to speak once?
That's right.
Okay. Then I'm going to change my speeches. Good evening, Chairman Vos and planning commissioners and staff. My name is Amelia Jennings. I live in the west Lancaster, the fourth house behind this project, this proposed project at Sixtieth and K, and I love it there. It's so quiet and peaceful with clean, clear air and a beautiful view of the mountains, kind of like a country atmosphere, with close neighbors and good shopping centers within three to five miles away, and very little crime. It's just perfect the way it is. Why would anyone want any more? If we wanted to live in the city, we would have purchased a home in the city, so please don't bring the city to us. There are many reasons why I oppose this proposed shopping center. It would change our lives drastically, starting with the lowering of our home values, increasing traffic noise, including delivery trucks and trash trucks more often, as you mentioned, the big 18-wheelers coming into the shopping center. It will bring us poor air quality, undesirable people like day laborers, as mentioned before, illegal immigrants, and more crime. If the people on Avenue K and Sixty Second and beyond complained about the musical highway, don't you think they're going to be complaining a lot more about the noise that this shopping center will bring to that community? I hope you think this out carefully, excuse me, before you make your recommendations. Please think of what is best for the residents that live in that community for a change. Don't let it be another one of those deals like the one at Thirty Street West and Avenue K, where the change of commercial was made, two commercial was made, and the owner did not build on it. He just sold it and made a lot of money at the loss of the nearby residents lowered home values. Show us that the city of Lancaster has changed, and that they no longer do pay backs to speculators who have donated big campaign funds to council members or that other county officials, city officials. The word is out that Ben Siani is one of those donators for favors. Just tell him no. This city no longer makes deals. We would like to see this city to live up to its logo. It's positively clear. And remember the national motto behind you, "In God we trust." That is supposed to keep you honest in your decisions, and we do not need this shopping center, or we do not want it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
You have a great evening.
Cleo Goss.
Ms. Goss?
Good evening, and welcome.
Welcome. The length of Sixtieth Street West, beginning in Kern County within the city of Rosemont... The length of Sixtieth Street West, beginning in Kern County within the city of Rosemont, through the unincorporated LA County, west Lancaster, the remaining pockets of Quartz Hill, through west Palmdale, and ending at Lake Elizabeth Road in Leona Valley, has one, and only one, commercial store, AM/PM on L8. Except for that one commercial store, the land use on either side of the street is either residential or rural. There are agricultural farms, undeveloped land, a ranch, three churches, a vineyard, and homes. This commercial development does not fit in with the current land use. Most residents bought their homes in the neighborhood specifically because the land use was a mix of residential and rural. Changing the zoning from residential to commercial is like breaking a trust with the surrounding homeowners. If you feel the community needs commercial, why not move it away to the intersection of Avenue K and Seventieth, where homes have yet to be built? If all three of the proposed commercial projects are moved to this corner, they would be well established before any surrounding new homes are built. The future homeowners would know when they bought their home that they will have to deal with the traffic, pollution, and crime that comes with commercial establishments. Does the community need this commercial? The 2008 economic analysis report evaluated the effect the three proposed commercial projects on Sixtieth Street West would have on Lancaster's existing and future stores. The report included Amargoso Creek Project on Avenue L and Tenth Street West, five miles away, but it does not include a single Quartz Hill store, just a mile away over on Fiftieth Street. This report finds that these projects will overstock the retail demand in the surrounding area. Restaurants and fast foods will increase to 12% above demand. Convenience food and beverage stores will increase to 30% above demand. Building material and garden supplies will increase to 49% above demand. And drugstore pharmacy will increase to 183% above demand. All of these figures do not take into account the over 67 Quartz Hill businesses, which include stores of equivalent types, with five convenience stores, two pizza shops, two restaurants, three cafes, two gas stations, a building materials store, a garden center, and a pharmacy. Why deliberately force the established Quartz Hill businesses into closure for no added value to the community? The economic report claims the oversold supply will likely be balanced by continued residential growth through 2014. In case you haven't heard, the housing boom has stopped, and will likely not restart until all the current inventory of new and unsold, and foreclosed homes has been sold. With all the housing and credit problems, why depress this once desirable neighborhood by rezoning it? A recessed retail demand requires less shopping, not more, as consumers in this uncertain market are saving more and spending less, which may well prolong the recession. Retail analysis predict as many as 200,000 large and small retail stores will be forced out of business in 2009 due to their own debt and the global credit crunch.
Thank you for your comments. Another speaker, Mr. Ludiki?
Paul Heyman.
Mr. Heyman, welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Vos, councilmembers, staff. My name is Paul Heyman, I'm a resident of the city of Lancaster. I am here to voice my concerns regarding the proposed future development at Sixtieth Street West, and Avenue K, and over 1,000 people that I believe thus far petitioning against this project. The city master plan seems to be going out the window and misrepresented. I want to leave here tonight so that all our citizens can once believe in a master plan set forth by the city of Lancaster. Job outlook and opinion of this development will crash my property value, and my neighborhood down even further than the Fed has already done. The proposed 345 jobs potentially created, as expressed in the EIR, are the lowest-paying job sectors, retail and fast food. The housing surge is over, collapsing, my home value has already dropped over 25% on the purchase price. A.V. Land did send out public relation teams and provided survey cards as well, but as we heard tonight, only 99 people or residences were consulted. This would've been also great, as evidence for support of this project, but these surveys were mailed back to the developer, not the planning commission, thus negative opinion could be felt by the developer prior to presentation to the planning commission. According to the EIR, beginning September 2007, without the permission of the city, the developer conducted unauthorized large-scale removal of approximately 118 trees, leaving approximately 10 trees standing and requiring cleanup of the downed trees. A.V. Land, is A.V. Land and Mr. Siani a trustworthy developer with integrity? This project threatens my small dwindling investment by such an absurd construction proposal, as well when the city votes tonight to obey the master plan and deny rezoning. We, the people of the city of Lancaster, appeal to you, the city of council, to impose upon Mr. Siani and A.V. Land to restore the subject site back to its original existing condition as it was, just prior to any preliminary investigations, especially in regards to the estimated 118 trees destroyed. These trees were the habitat for the great horned owl, that is endangered. We also request additional to the EIR in order to compare how the site ecosystem has been impacted and changed from the removal of these trees. A class action lawsuit is already pending regarding this mender, matter against Mr. Siani and A.V. Land. My petition is not solely based on the acronym NIMBYism, but this is not addressing the EIR. The traffic surveys were performed, we believe that the traffic analysis report is erroneous and misleading, while the traffic surveys were performed when area schools were out of session. The weekday AM/PM peak hour capacity analysis misses peak school traffic in the PM segment as set forth by the city of Lancaster Dakota Corporation. Our schools generally let out at 3:00 PM, your PM analysis starts at 4:00 PM, thus entirely missing our utmost concern when we go to pick up our children from school about 2:30 to 4:00 o'clock. Our children, pedestrian, safety, and during any hour is the utmost importance. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Another speaker?
Richard Hecker.
Mr. Hecker, was it?
Chairman Vos, and the rest of the planning commissioners, I wanna thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm the website administrator for Quartz Hill Cares, and my purpose for being here tonight is to basically just ask for fairness and due process. Quartz Hill Cares has been collecting opinions and ideas from the community about these developments on the west side, and it's a fairly diverse community out there. And you heard some earlier this evening said they signed petitions expressly thinking in terms of they want to oppose the Walmart and the Target on, directly across from the high school. They see that the language of it said the Sixtieth West Corridor, and so they think, you know, they don't want that signature to represent, you know, this particular project. Asking you for fairness and due process, the first thing I'd like to point out is the city has a general plan, and that general plan gives the roadmap for people who want to buy a home to be able to look and say, what am I getting myself into? If I buy this home, three years from now, what will it be like? They should be able to look at a general plan, and from that general plan know what their residential neighborhood is gonna be like. I only put in a card to speak for item number three because I wanted to talk about the plan amendment. Again, due process, the whole concept of having a general plan is that it's a blueprint, it's a guideline. There should be good reasons to override that plan and say, we recognize the plan says this is residential, but it's obvious from this plan, this proposal, that the benefits are gonna outweigh the use of it. I have not heard this evening that case being made. I've heard a lot of anecdotal information, people complaining because they're gonna have to drive eight miles to go, you know, five miles from one Lowe's to the next. By the time the lights are put in for this particular proposal, that person will be back up next time saying, oh, you know, now they're gonna have to drive five miles and there are all these additional lights in there. This problem doesn't get any better if there's not forethought, and there's not foresight used to think ahead and realize what the community's needs are. I realize the community has a lot of diverse views, all I'm asking is for fairness and due process, and listen to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Another speaker, Mr. Ludiki?
Jennifer Kane.
Jennifer Kane?
Kane.
Welcome.
Good evening, um, I just wanna say, this is really neat, it's the first time I've ever done something like this, and I just am really enjoying the process, and it's nice to feel that you just don't live in a city, that you get to be part of the city, and see, you know, your opinion, and it counts. Someone told me that I don't come here because they don't care, and I don't, I don't think that's true. Obviously, I wouldn't be here. But my grandparents came out to Out Valley in the 50s, and had a chicken ranch on G, on G for Rick and Bosch. And then my grandma, she got older, and she decided, you know, that was a little bit far, so she came into town. And my husband and I, we lived on J3 and Thirty Street West, my husband got a job in Texas. So, we moved out to Texas, and when it was time to come back, he said, you know, that's kind of a lot of hustle and bustle in there, maybe we should move up to Hatchipie, someplace a little bit quieter, because where we lived in Texas, they like to call it, um, city living with a country feel. And I said, well, I really don't wanna move out to Hatchipie, I don't come back to Lancaster, you know, it's where we're from. And I found this, out in Sixtieth Street, and I said, wow, this is what we were looking for, city living with a country feel. And I think that's really neat that Lancaster has that to offer. We have downtown Lancaster, where it's kind of like, um, like the historical park center, that little museum and stuff, that we could go and look to this. And we have the Performing Arts Center here, we could take our kids to. We could move a little bit further out, and be like, where they're more residential shopping type of thing, or you could go out a little further where it's quiet, and I think it's neat that we have Lancaster, we could offer all these different things to people. But if we keep bringing these big Lowe's, and these huge shopping centers everywhere, it'll kind of be the same thing, the whole city's gonna be the same, and we won't have the diversity that we have now, and I think that that's really neat. And we, people would say, well, we could go ahead and move. This city, this community out there, some of these people paid like over $100,000 more than what they're worth now, and they really don't have the opportunity to just pick up and move to someplace else. And we just bought here recently, but neighbors across the street from us paid $130,000 more for the house that we just bought. And I think that's a really nice neighborhood, and you say, well, just keep moving to the outskirts, keep moving to the outskirts. This is our home, this is where we're gonna have our, we have three babies, and we have a five-year-old, a three-year-old, and a one-year-old, and I want this to be our home, I want Lancaster to be their home too, I want them to like to live where we're living at. And if we keep pushing ourselves out, we're gonna end up in the poppies if we keep going out and out and out, and we can't eventually do all that because of our water and stuff, I mean, we wanna be able to provide people here and stuff, and I just think that Lancaster's a really neat place, and I'd like to keep like that diversity, so there's something for everybody. And if you get tired of living in the hubbub, that you could move out to the outskirts of Lancaster. If you think, I wanna be, you know, I'm a more hip, I've got things I need to, move to the outskirts of Lancaster, in the bowels of Lancaster, right where everything's moving and shaking, and I just think that we could have something to offer to everybody here. There's places where people have their goats, and people have their horses, people who live in apartments, and the college, I just think it's really neat to keep it diverse, and to have something for everybody, and if you want something different, you don't have to go to someplace else. Thank you so much for having me, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Another speaker in opposition?
John Weathers.
Chairman.
Welcome.
Vice Chairman and Commissioners. I live literally across the road from what is supposed to be the gas station. I literally overlook this place, it's maybe not even 50 yards. I was gonna talk about the gas, the fumes, and all of this stuff that I would be getting in my front door, but then you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, about the fact that they can't turn the gas truck around in the actual parking lot and all of this stuff, and I was thinking that these guys make these beautiful buildings, why can't they make a mall somewhere else, further north, which, I don't know if that would make more money, more jobs, whatever, but it would mean that we wouldn't have to have this thing right in the middle of, which is our homes. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Mr. Ludiki, how many more speakers do we have?
One.
All right.
One.
One?
Barbara Weathers.
Uh, Ms. Weathers.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, and Staff. My name is Barbara Weathers, and I live on 59th Street West and J12, and I'm here to say that I oppose this plan, not because I don't want people to have jobs, but I oppose the location. When we bought our home, we didn't buy our home thinking, when you look out your window, we're gonna see a Home Depot, a gas station, or a McDonald's. And I think that all of the people that, a lot of the people that spoke here tonight, that spoke very eloquently about what needs to be done, and that Lancaster needs more jobs, and, you know, this is good for the community, that is a good idea, but not in the middle of a residential area. When we bought our home, we were told, it's residential, you don't have to worry about anything like that, we could've moved to Palmdale, where you don't have to worry about looking at a gas station when you open your window, or smelling gas. And if people keep saying, oh, I have to drive, you know, 30 minutes to Home Depot, well, from J12 and 59th Street West, Home Depot is seven minutes. If you wanna go to Lowe's, Avenue K, 10th Street West, that's eight minutes. I work from home, so I'm home all day, so I will be the person that hears the delivery trucks roaming by. I will no longer hear the birds, or see the birds, in my backyard, or going past, I'm gonna hear those delivery trucks, I'm gonna see the crime, I'm gonna be the person that maybe one day, you're gonna hear on the news that, yes, there was a crime committed, she opened her door, and, you know, the person that was there loitering decided to knock on her door and kill her. I oppose this. It sounds a little radical, but there's no reason to put anything like this in a residential when there's so much empty space as there is. If you go down J12, uh, excuse me, Avenue J, 10th Street, it's 20th Street, 10th Street, how many more empty stores do we need to see? There's a CVS, L, 45th Street West, CVS, Thirty Street, and J, CVS, 10th Street, and Avenue K. How many more do we need? I agree we need jobs in Lancaster, I have empathy for people, who knows what the future holds, but do we need it in our residential home? I don't think so. Does anyone here live in the area? Does anyone here have to look out their window, smell the traffic, possibly get the crime? Worry about their children going back and forth to school? I don't think so. No one knocked on my door and asked me, and I live on J12 and 59th Street, not one person knocked on my door and said, is this what you want? And I heard someone say, we've knocked on doors, we've done surveys, no one asked me. Only, the only people that knocked on my doors were my neighbors who oppose this. There are so many empty spaces, and this means that the people that are buying homes now that can come in and decide, yes, I don't mind looking at Lowe's, or I don't mind looking at Home Depot, or I don't mind looking at a gas station, I'll buy that home, but we're already stuck there. And does our, do we count? I'm a taxpayer, I'm a voter, and I own my own home. Do, does my vote count? That's what I ask.
Your time's expired. Thank you for your comments. Do we have any more, no more speakers?
No, Mr. Chairman, one person said he couldn't stay, he simply left a short note indicating he was in favor of the project, but he left.
All right.
That's it.
The commission is going to take a 10-minute recess, and then we'll hear from, a rebuttal from the applicant if they care to give it. Thank you. Thank you. All right, folks, if, uh, we can, we'll be back in session. If you'd please take your seats or take your conversations outside, one or the other, please. Thanks very much. Please take your seats or your conversations outside. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. All right, the Commission is back in session on general plan amendment 0501, zone change 0501, and conditional use permit 0712. Uh, it would be appropriate to hear rebuttal now, uh, from the applicant's representative, whomever that may be. And hopefully you'll limit it to one or two, please.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, we appreciate your time in hearing all of the arguments, both for and, and against the, uh, proposed development. Um, decided not to go into too much detail, uh, because we do feel that the analysis is thorough and speaks for itself. However, if you have detailed questions, we'd be happy to answer them. But a lot of the concerns brought up address issues such as drainage, traffic, noise, air quality. All of these elements have been addressed in thorough analysis in both the EIR, which as a side note was done by the city's chosen EIR consultant. So it was not the developers, engineers, traffic consultants, noise, you know, consultants who did these evaluations. Um, but also in our site review. And we've reviewed and, and feel confident that all of these concerns have been addressed. They comply with the city standards, county standards, state standards. Um, we will continue to work on any minor elements that may be of concern. Uh, truck circulation movements can be shown on the map. Um, and as we go forward, we can continue with an even broader community outreach. The developer has, uh, given the affirmative to move forward with a broader community outreach as we continue with the project. Um, but most of these, like, concerns I have, as I have said, have already been analyzed. Uh, some of them have been conditioned and we are more than willing to comply with all of the conditions. Um, so if you have any further questions, we, we don't-
Maybe, uh, anyone?
You know, these, these concerns about traffic and mitigation, noise, I mean, it's all, it's all here.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other rebuttal speakers, no? All right. Then it's without objection appropriate to close the public hearing? And, much your pleasure, folks. Um, procedurally, uh, it would be appropriate to consider the general plan amendment and zone change in one action item, if you care to have one. And, um, secondly, then the con- uh, conditional use permit as a separate action item, if you care to consider that.
Uh, personally, with this, with this particular project, I have some reservations as far as, uh, the loading is concerned. So in, in my opinion, we should couple them both and continue them until the next meeting, uh, when we see, uh, what the solutions are going to be for the loading. Uh, additionally, I'd like them to take another crack at, uh, the 25-foot deed, uh, with the neighbors. That was also a concern of mine. Uh, so in my opinion, uh, we should continue both items, uh, until next, next meeting.
Are you offering that as a motion or just make a comment?
Yes.
You are?
A comment, actually.
Pardon?
Comment for deliberation.
A comment, okay. Very good. Anyone care to join in? Anybody else? Any other comments you want to make?
I do have a comment and it's going back to what, um, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but, um, when you had mentioned the, the children and I, I do have the mitigation measures that we received a few days ago. And I did notice that there was nothing really, um, um, said in these mitigation me- measures about the children who will be walking to Sundown School during the construction process. Because we're doing a lot of street widening, um, uh, a lot of construction, a lot of work. And I know that there is a, a one and a half mile walk zone that goes from 60th Street and L up to Sundown School. And I do know that Westside School District, when they were doing work on that, that corner in the past, had to pay for the, the children who normally walked to be transported to Sundown School so they would not, um, be in danger in those construction areas. So is it possible, and I'm not even sure if this is something that, that we can add, but during the construction phase, I, I imagine after the construction is completed, there'll be sidewalks, there'll be crosswalks, there, there are existing crosswalks out there already. But, um, what I would like to, to put forward, and I, I don't know if the, the developer would consider it, would be if Westside has to again do that and transport those kids to Sundown instead of letting them walk through all this mess that will be going on during the construction phase, um, would a developer be willing to, to work with Westside School District to pay for that transportation? Because I don't think they should have to take the hit if in fact that's something that they needed to do.
I think we're within our authority as Commissioners to establish, uh, whatever conditions you wish. Um, if you want to engage the developer, we have to reopen public hearing and start all over and I wouldn't recommend that.
Okay, not, not engaging the developer, but, but could we-
Staff?
Yes.
Mr. Ludiki, what would you suggest, uh, miss, missed concerns?
I, I think there's a number of things that you could look at doing. Um, my suggestion would be this, um, that you, you, if you're looking at addressing the issue, um, and wanted to do it as a condition of approval, I would suggest that you require the applicant to prepare a plan, uh, in con- in concert with the, uh, Westside Union School District, um, indicating the pedestrian access around and by the site when construction is occurring. Um, that way you, you ensure that you've got the, uh, school district's involvement as well as the, the city's, uh, traffic engineers who would want to look at that plan also. Um, as far as, uh, paying for transport, um, I, I don't know that, that you can flat require that, however, what you may want to do is indicate that the developers should contribute financially towards, towards whatever mitigation is necessary to, uh, deal with the, uh, transport of those children if it's not possible to create an actual walking path that goes through. And I know the situation you're talking about when those residential tracks were being built that are on that corner, there, there were a number of problems in regards to the street improvements and the timing. improvements and the timing.
Well, we'll be assuming approval when the project goes forward. I mean, the action tonight before us, the general plan revision and zone change and conditional use permit does not, in and of itself, guarantee that there will be a project that goes forward. So it's part of the process. The applicant must conform to all the conditions, go through all the internal controls and processes, be able to fund all the fees and costs before they ever get to construction. So if the commission so desires to move this project forward tonight and wishes to add a condition as you've outlined, then we would do that by an amendment to the motion to adopt, or would we give you verbal direction?
I would formally amend the conditions list for the conditional use permit. I think it's appropriate that it would go into that particular set of approvals.
Okay. All right. That's assuming we move forward with it, and I'm not sure that we are.
Well, having said that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to the next meeting.
Continue the matter to the next meeting, both matters or-
Yes. Actually, I think there's three now, due to the fact that Commissioner Smith brought up those issues regarding the children. So I think there's actually three issues.
Okay, so the first action item then, on general plan amendment 0501, zone change 0501. Your motion is to continue that matter for, until the next regular meeting. I don't know if that's sufficient time to, for staff to resolve the commission's concerns. But that's your motion. Do have a second.
I'll second that. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All right, further discussion?
I'd like to ask if the site map, there's some issues there that have been brought up, I think may be a concern to a number of commissioners. What are our options here with the site map, other than continuing? And Brian, I guess that's directed to you, perhaps.
What are your options?
As far as concerns with the site map?
You can do a number, well, you can do a number of things. One that's obviously on the floor before you is to continue both items with direction to address specific issues, and right now, there are three of them listed. You could also, as a commission, choose to approve or recommend approval or denial on the general plan amendment and zone change as one action and hold the CUP in abeyance as another. Those are, you know, are part of what you could do as a commission. You've got, you know, a little bit of flexibility here as to how you're going to look at dealing with it. I guess the key question that you would look at, from my perspective, is if the design issues are significant enough, or the issues that have been raised are significant enough that you cannot clearly decide whether commercial is appropriate on the site as a result of those design concerns, then my suggestion would be that the motion that's before you is probably the appropriate route. If, as a commissioner, you feel that the site is appropriate for commercial development, but there are problems with the specific design layout of the proposed project, then the route of making the recommendation for approval to the City Council on the general plan amendment and zone change and continuing the CUP to address those issues would be possibly an alternative for you to consider.
Anyone else have questions?
Yeah, that answers my question. I guess the other statement that I would make is the three things that we've brought up, I don't believe that they have bearing on whether this, whether we can move forward with the zone change or not. It seems to me that we may be putting that off, and I don't want to ever be a body that puts things off. So are these three things, things that have bearing on the zone change, yes or no?
For me, yes. It will affect my vote.
Okay. But the motions before us, if I understand the motion correctly, is to continue, first, the general plan amendment and zone change, and then we will take up the conditional use permit. Do I have it correct, Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Anyone else care to comment on anything?
Can you repeat that again?
What?
I got lost on your interpretation of-
My understanding of the motion before us, it would be to continue the matter for 30 days, the matter being number three, general plan amendment and zone change. And then, once we deal with that, whatever, how that route turns out, whatever we choose to do, then we'll take up item number four. So, anyone care to speak to Mr. Irvin's motion? Or against? I agree with Mr. Burkey. I don't believe it's appropriate to extend the time on the general plan amendment or zone change. However, when we consider the next matter, I will decide then. So, are we ready to vote? Please vote.
Which motion are we voting on?
Item remains open.
Right. So the, so the, an appropriate motion would be to approve general plan amendment 0501?
Actually, my vote was yes and no. I'm sorry.
Oh, you, I'm sorry, okay.
Can I change it or?
Yes, you can. If you, so electronically, let's just poll the members then, just so there's no confusion. If you could do that, Madam Clerk. Could you poll the members, please?
Vos?
No.
Smith?
No.
Burkey?
No.
Irvin?
Yes.
Hickok?
Yes.
Jacobs?
No.
Molly?
No.
Thank you.
So the motion fails five to two. So the next, the appropriate motion to make in consideration of approval of this matter is before you.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 09-11, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Lancaster recommending to the City Council certification of the final environmental impact report, necessary environmental findings, and approval of the general plan amendment number 0501 and zone change number 0501.
Second that? Thank you. Motion seconded. Now, further discussion? Anyone care to offer anything? All right, please vote. All right, thank you. So the next item is item four, which is the conditional use permit 0712. Mr. Irvin?
I'll go ahead and make a motion on 0712, that we continue this matter to the next meeting 30 days from today.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue the matter with strings, because that would be my interpretation of it.
Correct.
So the items, let's just, to refresh-
Thank you.
Mr. Ludiki, if you would indicate what the concerns were?
The three that were brought up in the previous discussion are loading, adequate loading area, a reconsideration of the 25-foot deed on the western property line, which I interpret to be a relook at that buffering scheme that was apparently discussed at one point with several of the owners, and a desire to review what can be done in regards to safe passage for children who are pedestrians at such time as construction would occur on the site. Those are the three items that I believe the commission raised. If there are others that you would like us to also consider, I would appreciate they be a part of the motion.
I would think that the 30 days could also be used for a little more work with the public relations firms, with the neighbors in the outreach, since there seemed to be a lot of discussion that many of the neighbors hadn't been contacted. Maybe some more work could be done on that.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? I have one, maybe more than one. Is 30 days sufficient time, do you feel, Mr. Ludiki, to work these issues out, particularly the interaction and with the Westside Union School District?
My belief is no. And I would say that in this particular case, a 60-day continuance would not be harmful to the applicant in the sense that the CUP is not valid until and unless the City Council approves the general plan amendment and zone change anyway, a process which is going to take them probably at least that period of time. So I would say that in the overall scheme of things, no, I don't think that would harm the applicant. Number two, given the issues, at least so far, that have been raised, I think staff's going to need more than 30 days to work that out, and I would request that.
One thing I wanted to ask is, when you mentioned buffering, are we talking specifically about the gates?
I gather, not only from some of the comments that were received here tonight, but particularly from, I don't know if it was one or two, but one letter from one of the neighbors that was particularly detailed on that issue. I think that it would behoove the applicant certainly and staff to go back and take another look at that issue, because there are a number of different things involved: maintenance, emergency access, and buffering. And they all need to work together to be effective on a design issue.
All right, so the maker of the motion had indicated a 30-day continuance. Is it your pleasure to make it 60 days?
Yes, it is. I'd like to change my motion to 60 days. Second.
The second would be Ms. Smith, if you want to concur, and we don't have to vote on it twice.
He said second. Second.
Second, second. So we've been seconded a couple of times, all right. Okay, any further discussion from the members? Anything staff wants to add to the process here before we take a vote? You okay with where the members are at? All right?
Motion passes seven-zero. The items continue for 60 days. Will be on the regular June Planning Commission meeting.
One question I have for you on the previous action under number three, the approval of that does not, and the continuance of this does not delay the process in moving the general plan amendment and zone change-
No.
-to the City Council, right?
No. The general plan amendment and zone change can be scheduled for hearing in front of the City Council during that time. So once that date is selected, we'll-
All right. That concludes item four. The next item on the agenda is item five, which is a conditional use permit number 0102, amendment number one, for a car wash, self-service car wash at the northwest corner of 10th Street West and Avenue L in the Costco Center. We did receive a concurrence letter from Costco, I believe, on that. However, the members may want to hear a staff report on that. Anybody? No? All right. So the public hearing is open on conditional use permit number 0102, amendment number one, for a car wash at Costco. Do we have any speakers, Mr. Ludiki?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Appropriate to close the public hearing without objection, and to consider the recommendation before us.
I move to adopt resolution number 0908, approving conditional use permit number 01-02, amendment one.
Second that. Thank you. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded, please vote. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is condition, number six, conditional use permit number 08-21, which is a request to locate a church within an existing industrial building in a light industrial zone at 1028 West Avenue L 12. And I believe we also received on this a conformance letter. Did we not? We did? We did? I'd like to hear a staff report on this. I've got some concerns, so. Is the applicant here? The applicant's here?
I think Dan Miller will give the report.
All right. Go ahead.
Chairman Vos and Commissioners, Dan Miller here to read the report. The applicant, Michael Sol, has requested a conditional use permit to locate a church totaling 3,486 square feet within an existing 7,518-square-foot industrial building located at 1028 West Avenue L 12. A conditional use permit is required for a church located in an industrial zone to ensure compatibility with industrial uses. In addition to compatibility, parking for churches in industrial zones is another factor analyzed for the conditional use permit, because the required parking ratio for churches is greater than industrial uses. There currently exists a church on-site within suites 105 and 107 of the building. I didn't give you the address of the other one, but it's a second building on the site. There's approximately 3,500 square feet of an 11,310-square-foot building located north of this proposed site. Together, the two churches would require 54 parking spaces. Since 71 parking spaces are provided for the two industrial buildings, and that both churches are open only during Sundays from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and on Wednesdays from 7:00 to 9:00, when the other tenants are closed, there would be an extra 17 spaces available to serve the two churches. The applicant is aware of future conflicts with potential noise, odors, and such with typical industrial uses that could impact the church. Currently, the surrounding industrial businesses are closed on Sundays, and the yet-to-be-completed three-story office building to the east would have compatible office-type users. Staff is therefore recommending approval of the church, based on the site having sufficient parking, adequate access, and being compatible with the existing uses. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions?
Where's the other church? Where's the other church located?
Got your pointer?
You see that site plan? The host church is in the upper-right-hand corner there. The church is in this northern building, towards the back, right there.
It's actually towards the back, okay.
So the hours of operation would be similar. So, the hours of operation would be similar, the proposed hours of operation would be similar for both churches, and all of the parking would be oriented in the rear, and the front parking really isn't considered because of the distance.
Well, we consider the parking for the entire site. People will be able to park on the north, but there would still be aquapark, we feel, for the parking to the south.
Right. So, it's one way in, one way out, circulation. Staff report talks about other businesses not being open at that time, but that just, in my opinion, happens to be today's circumstance.
This is true.
Future tenants may decide to be in operation 24 hours a day, seven days a week, who knows? So, there is a, there is a risk of, of impact to the tenancy of the other tenants, and I, I don't know if it's fully leased or what, but I did notice when I made the site visit that there appears to be a considerable number of signs on the front building that don't appear to be, to me, to be in conformance with the city regulations. It's really junked up. I don't know how else to say it. So...
Talking about the banners and...
Yeah, the banners, and the sign on the roof, and, and the different types of signage on the sides of the building, and all that sort of stuff. I don't know if there's been application or approval for those signs, but maybe somebody will look into that.
Well, that's something we can definitely take a look at, and if it's illegal banners
have come upon the site, we would address that through, I could address that through the applicant, and if, and need the code enforcement, but I believe the applicant, which is here, would be happy to probably oblige and handle that situation, have this thing go forward.
Okay. When we open the hearing, we can deal with that. Might also point out, just as a matter of interest, the shopping center we approved, or that was approved on M and 10th Street West with the single tenant, has the remainders of streamers strung all over their parking lot, which is rather unsightly, and I don't know that the code even allows them to put them up in the first place, but anyway, just thought I'd mention it, since I was out there. All right. So, thank you. Any further questions, the staff? We have any speakers on this?
I believe the applicant is present, but I have no other cards.
Mr. Osola? Welcome.
Sorry I look like this, but this is the continuation of last week, and I just, there was just no time to clean up to get down here. First of all, there are no banners on the property. There are some signs. That's very true. And those will be taken care of immediately. However, one of the aspects of this is, four years ago, when the first church came to us and asked us if we would lease to them, I was really concerned. I mean, leasing to a church, I mean, may be all right with you people, but, you know, as a, as a property owner, I was worried about the teenagers, you know? I was worried about how people would treat the property. We have had, they, they have turned out to be the best tenants ever. We have had no problems with them. We have had no police issues. We've had no teenage issues. We've had no graffiti issues. We have, we have had nothing but good, good rapport with them. This other church that's coming in, hopefully, we feel are going to be the same. Mr. Miller asked about the parking way back when, when we first started this, and what we have is, I, I don't know that you can really tell it up there, but we have, you won't see it there, but Brian, could you kind of put the red over to the right where the, all the stuff is? We have an additional third of our property that's dirt. And, yeah, over in there, that's, that's all dirt, over to L 14. And our plan is if we get into a problem with respect to parking, we're just going to convert that into more parking. I have no desire, at my age, to do any more building on that property. That's, this is it. This is it. So, if we have any more parking issues, we're just going to go over there and we're going to put some more concrete down and do whatever we have to, to make sure there's no congestion. Currently, we have, on Sunday, when I've been there occasionally, about a third of the parking lot, Brian, could you go back? I'm sorry. About a third of that parking lot that you see sandwiched in the back is occupied. And we figure that probably the other, another third of it will be taken up with this new church, and we'll still have ample space around. One thing, though, that, that really got me when the first church came in, and I realize that I'm not on three minutes, but I'll be quick, was, you know, today's churches, if they're not in the traditional ones, do not look like cathedrals. They look just like businesses, and if you go and look at the, the church that we have on there now, you won't even notice from the outside that it's a church. And the church that's coming in will be identical to that. They look just like businesses. And that's because they can't afford to build cathedrals, and they come to us that have the space and can make the nice occupancy for them. And it keeps the, the members happy, I think. And so, all I can say with that is we have, we have plans to take care of any additional parking issues. There's no noise issue, there's no pollution issue. They don't litter the place. I can tell you right now, we have a couple of our tenants that do litter, and they, it's bad news, we're, we keep trying to, trying to get them to stop it. But, anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any questions?
I have one, one quick question. I just want to, for clarity, you're saying that the existing church uses a third of the parking spaces in the back?
About a third of that, yeah.
I see 12 parking spaces, is that correct?
Well, they're probably, yeah, somewhere in there, 12, 15.
They use about four parking spaces?
Pardon?
They use about four parking spaces?
No, no, no. They use about, I don't know, they, they have, right in, can I borrow your...
This back side?
Oh, that's not bad. The existing church fills these up right here, and they fill about across there.
Okay. I was looking at the very back, when you said the back.
The very back here. Whoops. I'm sorry. Brian, you're going to have to help me. Whoa! How far, what did I do here?
Looks like operator error.
Correct. There you go.
Okay. That's not a problem. It was a misunderstanding on my part. I thought you meant to the far left, that parking area over there.
No, we have, right now, just literally, all this is available, and we figure that the, the new church come in will take about the same amount.
And with the new church in, are, are tenants in every building at this point?
We have basically about an 80% occupancy. We're, we have, we have some tenants that have problems because of the times. We're very concerned about them. In fact, we believe that we'll probably go down to 60% occupancy, just because of what's happening. There's no way that any of us in this room can do anything about the recession.
Sure. 12 to 24 months from now, things turn around and, and it's full. Do you perceive that you will have a parking problem with what you have right now, forgetting the rest of the, the raw land?
Well, once again, if we have that problem, what we're going to do is turn this dirt into what we need for parking. And we have, right now, it's tentatively, there's an 8,200-square-foot building that we could build over here, but that was in the days when I was an optimist. I'm no longer optimistic. So, anyway, we just look at it as a big parking lot now.
The commission approved your application for an expansion and condominium for this project here a couple of months ago, did we not?
You did. We had to scuttle it because of the times. So, there's no plans at this point in time to revive it. Now, maybe two years from now, Chairman votes, we might do that, but I don't see it happening. Any other questions?
Anyone else? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. All right, no other speakers? For, against? All right. Appropriate then to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on conditional use permit 0821.
I will make a motion that we adopt resolution number 09-10, approving conditional use permit number 0821.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion from anyone? All right, please vote.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you. Director's announcements?
The only thing I have to remind you of is the, the meeting on May the 11th. It looks like, from our polling, that's, that's the, the date that works the best for the majority of the, the commission members. So, when you adjourn this meeting, you should adjourn to, to that date.
The adjournment reads Monday, May 11th at 6:00 p.m. in the Planning Large Conference in the City Hall, which is our typical briefing. And then, should we then also indicate on our, that we'll reconvene on a special meeting at 7:00 p.m. or something?
I, I think for purposes of, of notifying the public, that would be appropriate. We will put out a separate agenda for the May 11th meeting. However, I, I wouldn't want anyone watching this to not be aware of, of that special general plan meeting that you have scheduled at 7:00 o'clock.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Is that, is that all your announcements, Mr. Director? Thank you.
Yes.
Anything from the commission?
One question I was going to ask is, because we're continuing that item, we normally turn this information in, Joy? I'm assuming, I would like to hang on to the information concerning that particular project. I just wanted to bring it up with all the rest of the commissioners.
Yes, I think that's appropriate.
But there will likely be further distribution of material and data and...
I expect, I expect updated information.
By the way, I do appreciate the fact that you folks delivered, hand-delivered the information on Friday rather than, and plus emailing, which is fine, but not everyone reads email, and, and when we have these lengthy items with all this paper, it's probably a good idea to deliver it to us. I know the members expressed to me the appreciation of receiving it, so... All right. Now comes time, public business from the floor on any non-agendized item. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on non-agenda items. Members of the public should be aware of this when addressing the commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda. And you can, whoever wishes to speak would complete a speaker's card, and you're allowed three minutes. Do we have any speaker's cards?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Then, we are adjourned till Monday, May 11th, for our first meeting at 5:30 p.m. in the Planning Large Conference Room. And then, we will reconvene in a special meeting at 7:00 p.m. in these chambers on May 11th to consider the general plan revision. Everybody clear on that? Okay. All right. Thank you.